Okay, I'm gonna call and order the January eleventh special meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is now to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Six. If anybody comes in and wants to fill out a comment card, they may do so and they will be picked up later. And I believe Ms. Fore will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, everybody.
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year! This is our first meeting of 2024. Hopefully it'll be, it could be here for everyone, it will be.
And when your phone starts to blow up because your friends are unhappy because I called Snow Day?
Sarah, Georgia just called me from the bus and she says, "Is it true that schools can't collaborate for tomorrow?" And I said, "Yes," and she yells, "It is!"
It's true!
And then the whole class...
That was so funny, "It's true?"
All of the stars! I guess, but you know how like she doesn't think I have a lot of value because I don't actually have any influence over it.
Right, yeah, she can't make any decisions, but you know.
I just weren't working for the district when the phone went off, I'd be like, "Yes." And now it's like, okay.
Well, also, I was telling Kristen that was fine, if you lay in bed and the phone would ring, be like, "Yes," and you just go, "Thanks, Dan," and pick it up and go back to bed. Yeah, didn't even have to get out of bed, so.
But that's what I mean, the phone wakes you up, I think, because I...
Oh, it did.
I said, I text, I text Kristen on, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? I haven't tracked, it feels like a month and four days. And I just texted her to let her know that it was close, I knew she was making all this phone. I said, "That's just my habit, I've always done that before president." She said, "Oh, I didn't see it until I woke up." I just wanted you to know at 5:02 that it had already been called.
Yep, I looked at it once.
Oh, good to know, alright.
But just to date, calling night further, you prepared because it was a landline.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't do that to us.
Don't worry, I got mine on full blast for Wednesday morning, so that I would wait a bit more than four, we get one out, so otherwise I won't.
Okay, alright, well, our first order of business is the election officers for the year. And of course, this is for everybody and I just thought I would throw up, because I did this last year, having absolutely no experience in it whatsoever. And I was like, alright, I guess I'm just gonna throw out there my thoughts. So I'm gonna do the exact same thing again this year, throw out my thoughts, which are that I feel like we've worked very well together in our roles this year. I think everybody's getting into the groove, it takes a little while. Like, you don't just like pop into a role and go, "Oh, yeah, I've got this two months later on." It takes a little bit of time to get in there. And so, my suggestion would be that the officers stay the same for this year, just to keep that consistency and the continuity, especially considering we had one superintendent, we now have an interim superintendent, we're gonna be bringing in another superintendent. I think some stability and continuity would be nice. But that's my thought, and anybody else has any other thoughts?
I mean, I think that sounds fair. I do feel like we're gonna have a lot of things to onboard a new person with and details to share. So that would be difficult, especially with the president spot, for somebody brand new to be kind of figuring that out in addition to onboarding a new superintendent.
Well, I align those same wavelengths. If you're gonna try to educate a new person in our cultures and traditions to not have that experience yourself, you're gonna be in a tough position to do that. So if those of you that serves as head of curriculum committee or head of finance committee, that just makes sense to have some status quo this year.
Alright, well, then I would need a motion.
I mean, I've run, built a thing.
You still have okay discussion after a motion and firing.
Oh, okay.
Alright, I hope we approve the slate of officers of Dr. Foston as president, Mrs. Koval as vice president, Dr. Mashad as treasurer, and Mrs. Tryon as secretary.
I have a second. May I ask a question? Yeah, of course.
To maintain with the bylaws, we actually have to nominate a person for a position, we can't slate it, correct?
We've done a slate of our president.
We have, yeah. Because I think in the thing that says you have to nominate in our bylaws, so I'm just asking, but it says...
That's what they just, yeah.
That's a motion, not each individual, and then they're gone, and I'm just saying, okay.
You can do it either way.
Yeah.
So, just walked in, we had a motion and a second to do a slate of officers, keeping them exactly the same as they were. We're at discussion here. Do you have anything you would like to add in or question?
No, I am just deeply honored that I may continue to be our vice president.
Well, we have a second.
You're seven streets.
You're excited.
You have a new site and a second.
Alright, alright, well, okay.
Jump the gun on that one.
She's all excited about Snow Day tomorrow.
Is there any further discussion on this? Everybody happy, Chris? Okay, I think we can do this over the voice vote. Alright, all in favor of a promotion for the slate of officers? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. If you're curious, then we will move on. Okay, thank you for everybody that has already served in these roles for this year and look forward to continuing for the next year. Up next is our committee structure, we've got finance and curriculum. And as we just said, with the officers, I kind of feel the same thing applies with the committees. I think it's good to be able to be in a committee for at least a couple of years to really get your feet on the ground. I remember when I first got on the finance committee, that whole first year, I'm like learning and learning and learning. And it was the second year when I came through and I was like, "Oh, I understand that so much better why we did that last year." Like, I think you just learn a lot by, through the continuity and again, like with having a new superintendent onboarding and everything. That would just be my recommendation. How do people feel about their roles and where they would like to be?
I mean, I agree with that, I would say I absolutely love being on curriculum committee. I feel like that is something that I have a lot, I can contribute to in that area. And so, I would agree that I feel like it's good to keep that structure, again, same reason, onboarding a new person, playing how everything has worked in the past and what we think and how it should go in the future. I think it's good to have that kind of institutional knowledge for them.
I was on the finance committee for the first couple of years, and that was important for me to obviously get all that background. But I think curriculum committee is the right fit for my skill set and knowledge. So, yeah, I would like to stay there. Okay?
Perfect.
I was saying, I said, "Are you good where you're at?" Because she is, I mean, she's good at finances too, so, you know, I'm fine, but I'm learning a ton, so.
Yeah.
I learned a ton yesterday on a set in curriculum, so.
You learned a lot about the course guide.
Yes, I did.
I'll pull you in on Monday.
Despite what I used to, I do encourage you all to make sure you spend time on both committees because there's nothing weirder than school finance and it's one of our huge responsibilities. So just over time, we'll make two, but yeah, I love the idea of state status quo for now, just don't do it forever.
Right.
Eventually, I think I could lend my expertise. Financial, you know, you don't need me.
I know, it kind of cracked me up, sitting on finance for a couple of years and feeling like I don't have the personal expertise. I learned a lot, but I couldn't have the same now.
And again, it's good to have expertise, but it's all about just having common sense and being a good listener, making it a good decision. So don't think you have to bring some sort of skill set to this.
Oh, right, yeah, sorry if I was implying.
There's nothing for me to do here in my skill set, so.
And I would never tell you what's gonna be your job.
Yeah. Alright, so we will then keep those status quo, do we need to vote on that as well?
Actually, the president can just say who's not.
Okay, so then for our finance committee, we will have CJ, Holly, and Mary. And curriculum will be Mallory, Maggie, and Krista. And I will always be available to help in as an alternate, unless I have to. Alright, perfect. Well, we still do not have any public comment, so our comment people here for comment. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, do you want to suggest changing the meeting time of finance? No, turn that around.
No, I'm sorry.
The only reason being, once a month can do meetings on a day, but I'm gonna tell you it's here because of the superintendent, I don't know, there are rules, I just work with my free creative, I can have a motion and it's just been... And right now, it's just so not very beneficial. I just know they're gonna work.
What is your, what time for curriculum work? Because if there's, what's tricky with Scott's schedule is that he already has so many things already plugged into his calendar.
Okay.
And this has just been the time for a very, I think even before I came on board, it was your time, but what time did it matter?
Again, I think one meeting on this time during the day.
But knowing that you're gonna have a new superintendent and you can tell that they're coming on board. I think if you, I'm sorry, I think if you are able to give a timeframe that works for you, that maybe could work with Scott.
I can ask him. It gets, it gets a little bit dicey because like yesterday, our meeting was two hours, for example. So then we get into like that 6:30, 7 o'clock window. And I mean, obviously, we all go to Monday night meetings, we go to late meetings. It's just how many of those do we want to start running into, especially who get that one?
Oh.
Oh, and I know, I'm gonna talk to him.
Okay.
Mallory, if you look into that and you wanna push it forward an hour, I can't do Monday, Wednesday, or Friday because I don't have the flexibility in my current job now. But a Tuesday or Thursday, I can, any time that works for you.
Let's, we'll keep it a bit longer. Yeah, I think it's very crazy right now.
Well, logistically for me, a Thursday or later doesn't work because I'm waiting for stuff to come to me and typically Kristen and Dr. Shug will meet regarding, you know, so Wednesday would be the latest in the week that really works.
Last week, I was like, I'll leave it a bit longer. And actually, going forward, it'll be better.
Yeah, and you're in your busy, super stressed hour. Is it possible, because we had talked before at the start of the year of just starting 3:15 instead of 3:30, like maybe just a tiny little bit earlier for you?
I...
She wants to leave. Oh, I thought you said, oh, well, she can.
I have an hour half hour.
Okay, I gotcha.
Let's leave it, but all part of superintendent, maybe if we're aware that you need to have more evening and it works, you know, like, you know, I mean, like whatever we're doing on, you know, the board work, you know, or whatever the, I forget what the thing's called. Where we all put in like what works for us, the whole, that's beautiful, though. If we can think about that flexibility. But again, like if it's literally only me and our entire admin team and everybody is still late for me, that's ridiculous too, so.
Do you not even worry about pulling that idea right this moment?
No.
I only say that because I, those meetings get scheduled and hosted, like a year in advance. So it's hard to just all of a sudden change those like in April or something.
And we do our organizational meeting in July, and you guys are talking about that because it does tend to jive better for a change in September or August versus January.
And we always do post subject to change, you know, so it's not that those, you know, like you can't, because I think the one year per year schedule, we posted 3 o'clock for the first however many meetings or 3:15.
And then there's a lot of stuff that can there.
So I mean, there is some flexibility there, but like you say, just to get it on everybody's calendar, that's just helpful.
Well, you see this six months ago.
Yeah, and also saying now, any day could be good work. Because I thought we were going forward, not backward.
Oh, gotcha. Kristen has a new job.
Yeah.
New job, new promotions, so.
Alright, so we'll keep it the same for now and we'll try to look for more evening type things where we have other meetings that pop up.
Yeah.
It's hard, it's hard to get all seven of us with so many things on the same page.
Alright, terrific, we will move on here to approval of minutes because that was the only thing there. So we don't have a consent agenda or anything, we just have the one item. So can we have a motion to approve minutes for the last month's meeting? Aye, motion that we approve the minutes from last month's meeting. Alright, and there's no money attached to this, so I think we can do a little break. Are all in favor? You say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, passes. We don't have any public here, so we will skip over public comment. And we will move right on to our work session. We are very, very thrilled to have Dr. Nick Sigalarick from the North West Education Services here with us. I know a couple of us did not get to meet him last time when he came for training on helping us figure out how to pick a interim superintendent. So he's been for a couple of us.
I heard him. I heard a little of us whenever we all since met him, but also really excited to have you here. Because I've been able to hold it in anymore and it's entirely unrelated to you. I just had to tell you all that my daughter won the spelling bee today. And I got to go see it!
Oh, great.
So exciting.
What grade?
Uh, she's in seventh.
What was the lady in words?
Mangels, meaning the plant.
Oh, mangoes.
Mangels.
Mangels, yes. M-A-N-G-E-L-S. And I only know that because I taught animal farm for a thousand years and it's hidden there repeatedly because the animals feed it, so. I, we spent time on that one even last night, and she was, when she got it, she's just big smile. She's like, "Yes, man angel" is how we were remembering it. I don't, it's very exciting, but English teacher-y excitement too, yes.
Well, first of all, thank you, appreciate, it's been a little while since we met last, but I really enjoyed our time there and looking forward to having some conversations tonight. This is intended to just kind of be very casual. We wanna be able to kind of free flow and think through cases and scenarios and try to, we'll do some reading and some discussion, but I want you to feel comfortable, to kind of take care of adult needs, if you need to step out, take a phone call. We'll try to have a little bit of break because we had to think about a three-hour session and so we'll see how far we can get through tonight. But again, appreciate the opportunity to be with you. You can see the agenda, the agenda will be posted just for you to refer to. We, our hope is to accomplish the following outcomes. So anytime we get together, I am a firm believer in the power of relationships. And so having conversations about your daughter winning this fellowship, getting to know one another is really important because you're doing amazing things for Forest Hills Public Schools. And it's a heavy burden, and if you can't foster and continue to build relationships, it becomes that much more challenging. And so first and foremost, I think I shared with Kristen on a call prior to, a quote from Dr. James Comer, who said, "No significant learning can occur without a significant relationship." And that's why we're here, we wanna learn and we do that through the connections that we got. The idea is, we're gonna try to explore roles and responsibilities and we're really gonna use some of the work that you've done as a foundation and try to build on that. I'm gonna go through some research and have you explore some of the portions of that research so that you can have some discussions with a table partner, but then also as a full group to see if we can come to some consensus. And the idea is, my understanding is that you want to aspire to be the highest functioning board you can be. And I think, you know, the parents and students and staff of Forest Hills community want that as well. And so, we're gonna try to dig into the research around what do really high functioning boards do and even contrast that to some lower functioning boards. And when I say that, it isn't to dwell on the pejorative, but the things that we wanna make sure that we're not gonna step into and fall back to in that, in that journey that we have. Try to outline a vision of what it is that looks like. And then my hope is that, starting from your foundational work, that we'll be able to walk away tonight with a consensus around some commitments that we wanna make. Commitments about how we're operating as a board, commitments about communication, both from the superintendent to the board of education, but then the board of education back to the superintendent, and what that looks like. And we'll start, some call it code of conduct, some call it ways of operating code of ethics. In one of the districts that I work with, the board felt strongly that they wanted to sign a document outlining what their code of ethics were going to be and hold each other accountable. So it's all up to the board on how we wanna proceed with that, but I'll give you some examples as well. And then I wanna lift up what you're doing right now. You're demonstrating to the students, the staff, and your community that you aspire to learn and grow as a board. You aspire to learn and grow professionally or personally, but then as a human, you're doing some learning together. I think that's a powerful message to send, so I wanna thank you for that and hopefully we'll have some accomplishments by the end of the night tonight. I believe it's important, I looked over here and I noticed that there are seven norms of collaboration that's posted about ways of talking and thinking in a professional learning community. And so, I too feel that's a great way to start a foundation. And so I started a list, just a few, and I invite you to give me your thoughts on that. First and foremost, presume, presume, yeah, presume positive intent. We're gonna go through an initial activity where we'll talk about, you know, why are you here? What's your motivation? Why did you sign up to this thankless job of being a board member? Something's inside of you that said, "I wanna, I wanna do this, I wanna step up." And so each and every one of you have that drive. And what I'm asking you to do is to presume each of those, those whys that you have deep inside of you are connected to the betterment of Forest Hills Public Schools. And so presume that positive intent. All voices are equal, I think it's important to lift up all voices. We wanna make sure that we're listening to understand, I don't know about you, but I sometimes have a hard time with this. A lot of times, when I'm engaging in a conversation, Kristen and I might be talking and she might say something and then right away I go, "Oh, I wanna say this," or I can add to what she's saying. Instead of really just being present, right? Trying to understand Kristen's perspective and understand how I might be able to paraphrase it back, or what I hear you saying is this, is that correct? To really try to get an understanding. I think it's important to engage in cognitive conflict. I think the way that we learn is to really wrestle with some, you know, challenging ideas and concepts. And we're gonna have some scenarios, some case studies that we're gonna go through that CJ might look at it a little differently than Kristen, and that's okay. Mary might say, "I don't see it that way at all." But what I ask is to not, I use this as an analogy. You're gonna put an idea on the table, but you're not gonna crawl up on it. Meaning you're just gonna throw the idea out there and then walk away and say, you know, "I'm okay with you, you know, challenging that." Because I think that's from those challenges, we think differently, we think from different perspectives, and that's how we really learn and grow. And I, you know, I'm kind of a positive person by nature, so I appreciate when groups are encouraging to one another, inviting others into the conversation. And that's just a short list. What other things, you all highly intelligent people and professionals, what other items might be important for you when we go through this work tonight? I have educators here, I've got doctors here, please, is there anything on this?
I think we're ready to work.
Okay, alright. Well, this isn't one shot and done, right? We could be going through some things and then someone say, "Yeah, well, I wonder if you could put up on the guiding principles, this." And we'll make sure that we do that. Okay, so, does everyone have something to pick with? Alright, I'm gonna give everyone a sticky note. And, or a packet of sticky notes, because you're gonna do several activities tonight, so we can kind of keep them.
So we can sort of keep them? Can I just keep it? Really, you get up a sticky note?
That's right. Okay, so I want you to individually reflect on the question on the board. Reflect on your journey to run Forest Hills School Board and then think about what motivated you to give your time, energy, and effort in service to the Forest Hills community? What was that driving force? Why did you run? Why did you choose to run? And then write that, there might be a couple reasons, so that's why I gave you multiple sticky notes. One, one purpose per note, and please write that down, I'll give you some time to figure it out.
Can you remember back that number?
I can, actually, definitely.
Okay, there's only two questions. Do I have any purpose, any clear reasons I have to? Put them on, or, or break?
When you finish, why don't we pair up, just two, 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 and two? Does that work? Or we make a trio there?
Somebody will have a three.
I have to do it.
What's that?
Bailey's do it.
Okay, right, so I think we got two, 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 and two. Tara, share with your partner about what you wrote.
So Sarah's doing it.
You're doing it too.
Why did you have, why did you have a lot of free time, right?
Why did I have a lot of time? That's a bigger question, but I can say. I wasn't my head, we need to bow. I should be turning it on, so.
Do we mind Bailey's doing this as members of her team or not?
Yes.
I'll just be, I'll be an active observer.
I'm just actually probably very excited, I said, so if I want to be a senior, I can be a lot, I should be writing one. Because I really like being a little piece of stuff. I also really like doing it in my community outside of the room. And then finally, I want to be a pleasure, I'm definitely grateful. What? Next two percent, I want to add.
I guess I, I want to share my time.
Oh, yeah, I shouldn't be sleeping late, but I'm pretty tired.
One kid or the other.
Yeah, all of them. They're gonna, this is a bell on the door. So, I'm writing this, so I probably won't about say now, I want to be a board president. I don't know what it's like after work. I appreciate your, 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 your.
I appreciate your, 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 your.
Yeah.
Come on, yes. Why aren't you, you're not working? No. Absolutely. I'm going to, I'm going to.
I know. There you go.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
No, no, but I mean, you look, but, but people ask me, like, what?
What?
I was just going to, I was just going to.
It's all one thing.
I was trying to get you to, because I was, was, um, it was a great, okay, to work closely with. I think that we've been close for ten years. I don't think it's a story. I'm just, I'm just, because I'm already, I don't know.
A guy who has some conversation here. Even though I was, I was, I was outside that. I didn't know this was a table, like, um, no idea.
I was still really connected to it. So, because it's just a different way to think. It has nothing to do with, other than it was a little bit of a surprise to the table. And like you said, knowing that people were making it on the house. So, yeah. Yeah, so my, you know, that it was, that bite. I had a facial presence. I'm like, oh, yeah. And I seemed to be, well, I'm sure I held it. I had, I had, I had a retreat to do more. And I got a talk to my, and I was ready to be with them. And I went back to the, yeah, I'm just, I'm just. I didn't write a lot on my, yeah.
And Mary was like, great, you have a good place for. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for a situation of, I think, well, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. There's, 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 it's not, it's not, it's not. It's not, I mean, kind of like, yeah. Yeah. That's what I want to, yeah. Kristen called. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't about quick social. Like, I should, I should.
Really? Yes. I still, I still, not like seeing it, like, there's a problem. But it's true, it's true. What is it that, how you, I, it's, it's, we can kind of, we can kind of.
And how do we know? Many of us.
It's the sign that it's about.
About sixty seconds, and we'll come back to that.
We're like, we're like, what's, what's challenging? You know, we already get the flag, and so, and I was getting jokes. Definitely.
Yeah. I was looking at, it takes a long, it takes a long time.
Well, you got a lot of your, your. It's, 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 it's.
That one, that one's my, 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 my. I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like.
I'm like, I'm like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Like, it's, 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 it's. Yeah. 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 But it's, 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 it's. Yeah. It's, 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 it's. And we want to, we want to, we want to, we want to. Parents, parents, parents. Yeah. It's, 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 it's. Much more, I know, it's, 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 it's.
Hey, you can finish your call.
But I'm impressed. We should have, you know, you know, we had no crisis. We, we, so, I'm just more than just happy. I read it a year in government. Yeah. Every district.
Thought about running for the board, I mean you've been in district and maybe thought before, but whereas I did not think I would be sitting here, I mean I'm still, I decided to run until she called me.
Yeah.
It would be great.
Yeah.
So sometimes I feel really guilty about that when she's like, I got to get to work. But, well, and that's actually funny, when you said time to get back, I was like, oh, that's interesting, they're little ones. We don't have that much time, but we still wanted to get back.
But it's important enough to you that you made that, right? And I, and that should be lifted up as well. Okay. So I think we can all agree that, you know, our whys are more alike than they are different. Right? And I think that's the importance of having a conversation around it. Because oftentimes, you know, in, in challenging action items or things that we have to discuss that we may or may not see eye to eye on, you know, reflecting on presuming positive intent in our why, I think is important. Uh, it will build relationships and it give you a better understanding of where folks are coming from. Okay? So you have in front of you, I'm gonna start with this. So in doing my homework, I went onto your website and I stumbled across the board page and I stumbled across this. I'm just gonna give you a minute to read. I even ran this by, so I have, I, I, I have a wonderful board president. He was a board president for forty-six years with our organization. Not all of president, but the vast majority. Uh, he's running up and it's his last term, so I'm only gonna have another minute. Uh, he's an attorney at town and truly dedicated to our organization and giving back. And I said, what do you think of this? And he was like, wow. First of all, he said, you know, did the superintendent write that? Did the board president write that? Where did that come from? Then I shared it with about a half a dozen superintendents. And they wanted to know if they could copy. This says such a statement for you as a board. And at a critical time, I may, right? You're gonna be searching for a new superintendent. And if you want a superintendent of high integrity, high quality, they're gonna do their homework. And the first thing they're gonna do is go check out your website. And I could tell you as a superintendent that is, might be interested in different positions. If I read that, boy, I wanna know more about this, Fisher.
Quick introduction, so you won't know, cause you don't know this, that was board generated. So you should feel proud of it. That was, we needed to reach our website, we sat down and we crafted that till we were blue in the face. So that is something you shall be proud of, that that was, you know, a board directive.
Yeah, and that's a great segue, and it was crafted some time ago. We're going to do some, uh, reading and some diving into some research around what highly effective boards do. And I want you to think, keep that in your mind. And then reflect on whether or not you should add or change, or if this really does align with what the research says. Spoiler alert, it's a really good document.
Yeah. Actually, I already let that cat out.
But it's a good place to start. So if you would, if you open up your folders. I'm gonna kinda walk you through what you have. On the left side of your folder, you should have a copy of the PowerPoint. So again, opportunity, I apologize to get it all kind of concise and not kill a tree. Um, I did put three on page. Uh, but if you wanted to take notes, please feel free to do that. Behind that, you should have something that looks like this, alright? I'm, we're not gonna have time, it's a, I think it's a fifteen, sixteen page deck. We're not gonna have time to digest all of this. But we are gonna go through a couple components. And this is for you for later reading. It talks about the eight characteristics of effective, highly effective boards. And if you're like me, um, you don't necessarily just trust anything that people write in, write in a paper, right? Uh, and so I think it's important that we're making conversations and decisions based on good research. And from my perspective, this is, this is really solid research. It's recent, two thousand twenty-two, it was published. Um, when you look at, if you are interested in, when you look at page three, well, actually bottom of page two and the top of page three. It really talks about the volume of research that went into this. And this study really does rely on some of the research done by Walters and Marzano. Um, that have talked about what highly effective schools look like. And they've made a, a comprehensive study of a meta-analysis of many studies together. In fact, in this, in this research that they're talking about, two thousand eight hundred districts have been involved. Three point four million children are included in this research. Twenty-seven studies have been examined and fourteen have information about the relationship between district leadership and student achievement, including board relations. Okay? And it's through that analysis that the authors, and this is a National Association of School Boards, and they have a center, what is it called? Center on Educational Policy, Center of Public Education. That, that wrote this report. And in your packet, you're going to see on the right-hand side, that's the material that we're really going to study and dive into. On the right-hand side, the first thing you should see is this two gray box. And, and just in that way, I, I took these two gray boxes from that whole report we had. So it's connected. And the left-hand side of that is eight characteristics of effective schools. And then a dozen danger signs. The other thing, uh, other point I wanna make about this research is that they just didn't look at high affluent schools versus, uh, low socioeconomic schools and compare that. They stratified it. So they looked at similar districts and the results from student achievement and the outcomes. And that's what they relied their basis on. So for our, for our purposes, Forest Hills would be compared to Bloomfield Hills. Uh, would be compared to Novi. You know, those are the districts that you're probably hearing some of those comparisons, Celine, um, some of those other districts. And they were able to segregate between those that get high achievement and results and look at their boards and what they do versus the one that for their demographic area, they get lower achievement. And what are some of the danger signs they saw in the research? Okay? So we're gonna go through this document pretty good. Right behind that, there's also, uh, and I will give credit where credit is due, that was the National School Board Association. There's a couple documents for our review on the Michigan Association of School, uh, Boards. They put out some great information around the roles and responsibilities of a superintendent and the roles, responsibilities of a board of education. And then finally, and this is where we're gonna spend a lot of our time. As I indicated, you have, um, in the recent past, have committed to, uh, the Forest Hills Board of Education norms, professionalism, governance, communication, board meetings, and planner, planning and monitoring. And so what we're going to do, because we want this to be a full board activity where there's consensus, we're gonna go into those documents and make sure that we're hitting all of the marks from what the research says and what your experience has told you to ensure that we can all agree that that's how we wanna operate. We need a spire to be a highly effective board, and that's what we're gonna commit to. And then, time permitting, we will go through a series of case studies. These are some made up, some are real, uh, situations that happens in school. And now you're a board member in that district, or you're the superintendent of that district. And what, what would you have done differently? What did you notice? How might this have been prevented? And I think there's some research around learning, around case studies. It allows your experience and knowledge and research to be coupled with a real-life situation and an application. And there's some really good learning that we can have from each other, from discussions. Oh, I didn't see that. This is how I thought about that. Okay? So that's kind of laying out our, our time today. Um, are there any questions before we dive into our first, first activity? Sound okay? Okay. So when I ask you to read a document, I'm wondering if you can help me follow the following protocol. And I put it on a poster board, so be with us. I also have it here. I'm gonna, we're gonna have you individually read, and it's not a ton of reading, right? I've given you the, we're, we're gonna focus on our reading on the right side of your folder. I'm gonna have you read a certain document, and then I want you to put a check on what you know. Yep, that made sense. Uh, maybe an exclamation point on what's most important in your eyes, or something of significant importance. And then a question around something you don't understand or you need clarification. Okay? We will then check with a partner, and then we will come back for full discussion. Alright? And the first document we're gonna do this with is the eight characteristics of highly effective boards. And in the same token, you're gonna do it with a dozen danger signs. Now remember, this is rooted in that research that's behind the PowerPoint on the other side of the folder. Okay? So we'll give you about ten minutes or so to review that document.
Yeah.
That's so cool. Yeah.
And I.
I remember. All right. One more minute.
Okay. Yeah. It's a little bit. I'm like. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, one more minute.
Yeah. It's a little bit. I'm like. I'm like. I'm like. I'm like. Because. Oh, wow. Okay. Wait. Yeah. That would be. I did. I was. I was. I was. Exactly. Yeah. I'm like. Yeah. I was. I was. Yeah. That's a lot. I wish I could. Or would it come? Yeah. Yeah. Well. Yeah. How do we? If you're. Yeah. Yeah. I wish that. I think. Right. And I wrote. I wrote. Without. Right. And when I. And then. And then. And then. I was. I was. A different. Especially. Right. For the only thing, you know. Yeah. I'm feeling. I'm. Four. You're gonna. And I. And I. And I. Yes. Before break. I'm glad we know that. New T. Yes. There are. There are. Yeah. I have. Well.
You're learning in terms of.
So. Yeah. Well. Just. Yes. Yes. Yeah. 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 I'm like. I'm like. And the. And the. And the. Hopefully. And the. And the. And the. And the. And the. And the ones that were. I think. Were the ones that were like, one, two. Yeah. I was. But now. But now. I think. I think. They give the. Yes. So, yeah. So, yeah. This is my step. Yeah. That's. Yeah. 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 And that's. Talking about. I love.
You can, you can.
I'm like. I'm like. I'm like. Yes. I love. I love. I love. I love. Yeah. Just. Like, you're. And. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm like. I'm like. And then. I'll just. Back. And then. She took off. Was when. And. 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 It's. It's. And it was like. Yeah. Yeah. Why? Yeah. Yeah. It was hard. I was like. Get it. Or.
But not, not. Actually.
Yeah. I don't. I don't.
This, this.
I'm like.
That, you know, whatever, like, you.
I remember this.
Just, just. Speaking. I don't have a question.
That was just one. It's.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's. Yeah. Yeah. True.
Yeah.
They are. Yeah. As we. As we. Like, maybe. Those champions. And one of them was like, and they put in a chance. That's.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. This is older. Which is. Yeah. 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 So good. It shows. Don't mean. Yeah.
But I also wanted. Well, you know, I also wanted.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Um, we're gonna kind of take this in two chunks. Uh, I'll just do, uh, the highly effective or effective need characteristics and then I'll just put danger here. Um, I want to kind of summarize in categories. You know, uh, what you already know, what's important, and then I really want us to spend some time on clarifications because I think that's where we're gonna do a lot of, um, learning, right? And a lot of conversation, learning through conversation. But it's also important to highlight what you felt was, uh, important, uh, and what you knew. So who, fair catch, who would like to start? What group would like to start?
We can start.
All right.
Yeah, sure. So, the, I, we had a little bit of a hard time with what we knew. I mean, I didn't feel like this was new information per se for us.
So you get a big check mark.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm seeing a lot of head nods. Is that, is that a lot of check marks?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, but then, we definitely had exclamation points for the things that we felt like were the most important to focus on.
Okay.
Or to be aware of.
Okay. So, so tell me a little bit more about that.
Okay, so do you have me give you numbers in the boxes that we?
Um, sure.
Okay. So, I would say we're, we were pretty aligned too with the, where we put exclamation points.
Okay.
So, under the effective school board.
Yeah.
We said, uh, three. So accountability driven.
Say that again, so what number was that?
Three.
Okay, three.
So, uh, spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policies to improve student achievement. We also said four. Uh, and we especially focused on building a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders. And this one, we had a little bit of a side conversation because this one can get hard and it might, if it's when it's not strong and when there is a lack of communication, I think it can start to feel like the board is meddling in day-to-day operations, which we know we don't want. But when there is a lack of communication, I think that is a side fact.
Okay, so four with an aster.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that, and that asterisk is really around, uh, lack of communication leads to potential micro-hack.
Yeah, I mean, maybe meddling is not.
Yeah, but the idea is that.
Or that it looks like. But looking like is just as bad.
Sure, and, and sometimes we can just think about this, like, it's not black or white.
Yeah.
There, there are lanes, right? Just like on a highways, you know, you can kind of sometimes veer or gonna veer it o- out of the lane. And so that's why it's so critically important that we have agreed upon norms, governance style, that we can say, and it doesn't, and it shouldn't have to be the superintendent's responsibility. If we have people that feel like, oh, lack of communication, you know, we're, we're veering out of this lane and into micromanaging, if we all agree that this is what a highly effective board should do, and this is what we're committed to, then it's really powerful to have each other, you know, have, have accountability within each other, right? And so I appreciate you lifting that up, Eddie, because, yeah, four is good out of the communication side of it, but a lack can, can really challenge the structure of the board and roles and responsibilities. Okay, anything else?
Yeah. Do you want to add to that one at all? Nope, okay. Do you want me to go into the danger signs also?
Okay.
Okay, so, we also agreed on quite a few of the danger, like, the, the most important danger signs was number two.
Can you read it for us?
Yep, focus on external pressures as the main reasons for lack of student success, such as poverty, lack of parental support, societal factors, or lack of motivation. Um, also number three, offering negative comments about students and teachers. Four, mi- mi- micromanaging day-to-day operations. Um, six. Uh, no. Is that right? Or seven? I think. I have like my exclamation point right through the middle of the line.
Six to something else when we're discussing it.
Okay.
That lack of information was the flip side to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one you highlighted up here.
So, yeah, we talked about it, but it was kind of more on.
And then, oh, go ahead.
Well, no, you finish up with that.
Yeah, so then. Side clarification. Number eight, looking at data from a blaming perspective, uh, describing teachers, students, and families as major causes for low performance. And then also, number nine, we felt like this was a weird, uh, an interesting statement because I don't know.
Don't write the number nine.
Yeah.
More of a clarification.
Yeah.
This is a question.
So little understanding on.
Don't tip, don't.
Over here? Do you want mine over here?
Yeah. So little understanding on staff development for teachers. I think that could be a problem if the little understanding is because as a board member, you're not paying attention. It could also be a problem if the district is not telling you. Um, so like, I guess it would just depend on why you have little understanding. Um, I don't know, we are, we kind of discussed the idea of this coordination. Is that really a board's responsibility to coordinate PD for teachers?
I like this one over to number six on the effective side as well. So this, again, this wasn't an exclamation point. This is actually more of a clarifying question because both number six, that says the school boards align, um, professional development to meet the district goals, and number nine on the danger signs say, you know, little understanding coordination on staff development. We do not feel it's our job to determine that professional development. Like, Scott is, it should be and is on top of that, but if that's about our understanding of what is going on and why it's going on, how it's leading to increased student achievement, then that's perhaps what the issue is. But we were curious if there was something we didn't know about our job as board members determining.
Like, I think we should know what is being offered to teachers, and we do. I think we're kept very well abreast of.
Right.
Professional development. And make sure it's happening, and we hear feedback about it, and we're, we get, we get a report about how it went, and.
Yeah.
I think that's fantastic. And, and, and how it relates to student achievement. But I don't know that, like.
Right.
I'm, I'm gonna recruit a speaker.
Right.
I can.
No. I, you know, that's why, I, you know, like anything, right? It, it isn't, shouldn't be taking this as like the bible, right? This is what research found in certain instances.
Yeah.
And we should challenge some of those assertions, right? I, I tend to agree with you. I, I think, and I have a bias here, but I think it all has to stem from a very clear vision process. Uh, you as a board, in my opinion, should be working with the superintendent and potentially, and this is not a blip, but potentially a third party outside consultant to gather internal and external data from your stakeholders. Through focus groups, and I, again, I'm biased, that should be not just people who've signed up for focus groups, but randomly selected individuals inviting them to come in. Because if you do it randomly, you could be assured that you're pretty much hitting the mark that that's where people are at versus the loudest people that might have the strongest opinions getting to the table. But you do it through focus groups, you do it through comprehensive surveys, asking the right questions, and the data drives the plan. It'll, you, you can, you clearly develop your values, your vision, and your mission of Forest Hills Public Schools, and you have specific goals that, with the help of the superintendent and leadership team, it is your marching orders for them to accomplish. But then you back away, right? Now, now, you made it clear, here are the goals of the district, and what it does for you as a board is it says, when this faction or this group in the community, if someone mentioned external pressures, right? When they come and they say, well, you need to be implementing, um, project, project-based learn, right? You can say, that's a great idea, and when we surveyed and we had focus groups, the data was clear that these are the goals that we're gonna work out for the next few years, and, and if that's really important, we want you to be engaged so that we can do the research that for the next strategic plan, it might make its way into it, if that's what the data tells us. But what it does, it, for the superintendent, and I can speak from experience, is that it also protects from, you know, uh, individual board members that say, oh, I really think this is important, or I think that's important. You can say, well, here's what the data said, and this is what the full Board of Education said that we need to focus on, and that's where I have to really focus my energy. Not that those other things aren't important and it can't be ignored, but it gives that board direction and it gives it accountability, right? It's natural inherent accountability, because if you have a, a list of goals and you're not checking them off, right? Then, then, then we're not holding up to our commitments, right? Um, so, to get, as I kind of birdwalk for a little bit, but to get back to that, the coordination, I would not put in a responsibility with board members. But if you have, let's say, a goal around aligning our priorities on student achievement, then the resources that allocate for that should be really clear to that plan, right? And you should have an awareness of what kind of professional learning are we giving our staff to ensure that, that we can be successful, that the administration can be successful, uh, to accomplish that goal.
Well, there are a few other question marks up there, too. And that really, like, one of them was, number one on danger signs, I honestly just was flabbergasted to think, I mean, if this were, if this were the situation, that's not just danger, that's failure. That's complete mess, and I just thought we have never been in that direction because one of the things, one of the things I love about this district, why I would join the board, um, is the vision. There's been a very strong vision many years before, you know, our, our last superintendent. I mean, that vision is strong, and that, I think, has made it so that there's a lot of strength.
Right.
Here. And that the school board has done a really good job of understanding what they were to do and to continue to support and to drive that vision. So, yeah, the question mark I want just simply because it was so absurd, I couldn't even.
Well, and ano- another reason that we are going through this activity is to lift up what you're doing, right? Well, and another reason that we are going through this activity is to lift up what you're doing, right? Like to validate, thank goodness, we're not that, right? That, we know that that's not what it is. But the research says that there are boards out there like that, right? Boards that are in similar demographics than you have, that operate differently, right? And what you, what we wanna do is kind of develop this, this thought process to, to be in congruence with, not in any complete agreement, but in congruence with what the research says about effective boards.
Makes good sense. All right, two other board question marks.
Okay, go ahead.
Number three on effective school board. I just circled the word, the word policies to improve student achievement because I think this is a word that has multiple meanings and multiple understandings, I should say, from people, all constituents. That perhaps this also really needs practices or programs that are put in place. Because when we're talking about focus, I mean, yes, policy is a part of this, but we have strong policies. So we are not opening up the policies and tearing them up and rewriting them all the time. But we are constantly looking at practices and programs and how administration is implementing these policies. So, I guess, when I, when I have my question mark down there, it's like those things are in place and they are solid foundation. I don't see us changing them up all the time to improve, to lead to improved student achievement. I see that we are looking at how they are actually being employed.
So, that kind of gets to the foundation of what, one of the fundamental roles of a board of education is. And that is to adopt and set policy. And so, if you have them in place and you're marching towards that, that, that gold standard, great. And you all know legislation changes, right? And all of a sudden, now, we have to give our board a whole new stack of policies because law changes, right? So it's constantly staying on top of that with the help of your superintendent to keep you abreast of what's important. And that's kind of where I interpret that. It isn't so much requiring a constant change of policies tied to student achievement. It's ensuring that they, that framework is in place.
And I think that's how I would interpret it as well. But that is a sticking point, and I know Kristen definitely, I mean, just this past week, of having to say again and again what a policy is, what a board policy is, versus what is a school's handbook policy and a practice and a program, like, all of that can be unclear.
Right, so, so you have policy, you have administrative guidelines, right? Those are the, those are the actions that the superintendent and the principals and the cabinet take to ensure the policy is being implemented as it was designed. And then, like you said, you've got, you know, student handbooks and all of those things that are the day-to-day operations. And what I would offer is, if, you know, if there's board discussion and there's full agreement on something that the board acts on, right? Like, I'm gonna put myself out there, I'm pretty sure you probably adopt all of the student handbooks at one particular time during the school year.
Technically, no.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, you're gonna have some opportunity to contribute or to review and adapt. And please know, a ton of work goes into those.
Oh, yeah, I would consider that micromanaging.
From a staff. So nitpicking necessarily isn't the role of the board and not something that you should do. I agree with you, it kind of gets into micromanaging. However, if you're, if you're interested in changing some of those nuances, I would say you're veering outside of the way from my experiences. It doesn't mean that you can't raise concern to the superintendent about it, and that wouldn't maybe warrant a conversation with the principal group on that particular thing. But again, you know, I often share this with boards. You have an awesome responsibility. Each of you were elected to the board to represent the community, and I love that, all students, right? But individually, you're, you don't, you don't have power, quote unquote, right? You only act as a board, right? And that's where I think it's healthy to have cognitive conflict and discussion at the board table. But one of the critical things is, in my experience, and we have a case study about it, is when difficult decisions are made, and that gets to the committees, that we had our debate, we voted as a voting body and unit in misdirection, and even though I personally disagreed with them, I know what our commitments are, and that was the board's decision, and I have to, I have to support it. Doesn't mean you have to be a cheerleader per se. But what, what it does mean is it means that you shouldn't be a detractor, right? And so, I know that's hard, because oftentimes when I work with boards, they'll say, but I'm representing X. And you just have to say, you got elected to represent all, right? And you do that by governing together with the superintendent.
Which brings me to our last question mark, and I have a lot of time.
Can we challenge policy a little bit? Challenge feedback if I'm wrong. Our job is to use the policy to execute the vision. So I don't ever want us to say, our policy is fine, we use practice and procedure to do it. If we get a change of vision, that's the means by which we try to make change. Like, that is our tool. So, we have a history of not doing a lot with our policy because we have great groups that support us, but that is the means by which we're supposed to make sure that our superintendent is carrying on his vision.
Yes, I understand that, I didn't mean to say the policy is fine.
No, so I do think we have to make sure that we're open again. Every time people call us, our first go-to should be to look at policy. If there's a policy, you're outside, you don't need to do anything, you know, let me reference you to this. But we might not pay a lot of attention to it because we do a good job keeping tabs on it, but we have had opportunities to say, maybe we need to adjust that a little bit or add to it, you know.
And I might tweak a little bit on what you said.
Because it's challenge back, yes.
If, if we're contacted about a, a, an issue, I hope our first response is, we all know that problems get solved where problems start, right? I hope our first response is always going to be, have you had an opportunity to talk to the teacher? Right? Have you had an opportunity, you talked to the teacher, great. Have you had an opportunity to talk to the principal? Or you did, and that didn't go up? And I say that not to put barriers, but if, 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 if the understanding in the community is that I could just call Maggie, and she's gonna, you know, call the superintendent, now all of a sudden this chain of components is gonna work. Maggie, you won't be able to do a full-time job of anything. Because, because it's gonna be known, it's the way you get quote-unquote things done or what you want is to go this route. And that really is, I would put that in one of the biggest danger zones there is. Because even if something is significant and gets changed, the messaging is, because you didn't do it through the proper channels, that that's gonna be the way things are moving forward.
And that was never intended to be solved.
No, no, no.
We are, we're not as on board, and so when things come up that challenge us, we like to find answers. And if they're already readily available, we don't all need to be calling. There's a little more about how to find the answers, and they should be in a place that we should be left. But yes, certainly not to start solving problems for constituents, I agree.
Okay, anything else?
Only the tiniest thing in number eight on the danger signs. And that's, I found it interesting, looked at data from a blaming perspective describing teacher-student families, but I was surprised in the laugh at the word describing administration, teachers, students, and families. Because oftentimes blame will go at the administration because that's what a school board interacts with the most. And so I just thought it was interesting that that particular word was missing from there. But I just wanted, that's a question mark. That was a, it wasn't a question, it was just a, well, that's interesting because it seems like blaming administration is definitely a danger sign. But that's not the same thing as holding administration accountable.
Yeah, well-stained. And I would, I would say, it's probably just an oversight.
Yeah.
I agree with you, if they're all, they're all in it, yeah. Okay, thank you. Other groups, do you wanna go?
Well, you know, so you had the question marks on seven and nine about, and as you were talking, I was listening, but I was also thinking, we had a question about number one in defining clear goals because the past year, we've been board members, we've had a lot of transition with superintendents and strategic plan that you've kind of heard about but really don't know about. So I guess we are curious about how a board defines clear goals. Is that, really, we have this vision, we have these policies, and we say to the superintendent, you know, we agree with the superintendent, tell them, but these are your, these are the goals we wanna see to uplift our vision. Is that kind of where that is coming, defining clear goals?
Yeah, so. And can I add to that?
Yeah, please come.
We kind of feel in some ways that, and then we're new, is we spend so much time on operational stuff and not actually.
Visioning.
Visioning, that we feel like our power is somehow sunken a little bit, like, almost like we're being told what to do and vote on versus us saying, do you know what I mean? Like, being engaged with what defining the goals are. So we know, like, every time we're voting, every time something comes up, that we say, you know, like, is that really where we're at with the vision? And I think one of the things that we brought up just as an example is, is the budget. Like, we would like to see trimming of the budget as one of the goals for this, for our board. Instead of the money keep going up, how about we start, you know what I mean? Like, we're an affluent community, so be like, so we're just gonna put, like, just a topic out there to say, what does that, like, what does that look like for part of our goals and our achievement? And just say, we would like, like, pushing forward our goal to say, we would like to see trimming of the budget. Instead of, do you know what I mean, expanding the money or something, you know, to that effect. That was kind of a.
I think that's a great, great question to lift up. And it's kind of tricky because Sarah's an interim superintendent, right? I'm an outside consultant, but it lived, lived the day-to-day. And, you know, to me, you've got, your big first challenge is, is hiring your next leader, right? And I would be remiss to say that you wanna do goal-setting and visioning before he or she gets on board, right? And so, it's important to have these conversations with whomever will be your next leader. And I would even encourage you to be thoughtful of what questions you're asking, right? I mean, I think it's completely appropriate to say, you know, there's pretty clear research about board goals and responsibilities, it's research about, you know, a clear vision for a school and a strategic plan. You know, what's your, what's your plan or thought about how we can work together to develop that, right? I mean, those are gonna be important questions. I think it is unrealistic to set a new strategic plan and vision without that in place. But on the same token, I think it sounds like it could be a priority of yours. Like, I think you'll be able to have some established goals. It shouldn't be something, I mean, the first goal should be, know our community, right? Whomever it is, meet with constituents, listen, be MFF. Those are really important first steps. And it also should be a part of, you know, how are we gonna work together? And how are we gonna build that vision and set those goals so that we aren't gonna be moving our legs and trying to micromanage and to be operational? We said it, now you do it, right? And, you know, I gleaned out a little bit on the finance committee and your CFO about what the financial picture looks like, what it might look like in the future. And then having a goal as that person is coming in to make sure that, that we're being financially responsive. And making sure that we're not operating in a deficit type of situation, right?
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Well, sorry, I don't wanna jump on your stage. But I think if you take number one at face value, I do think it is fair to say that the board as a whole, being able to clearly articulate the vision, it has been money. And I mean, I just finished my third year, and there's been a lot going on, there's still a lot going on. And we did talk about strategic planning and vision setting about a year and a half ago. And it kind of got, you know, put to the wayside because of the transition that we're gonna go through, completely understandably. But I, I don't think it's an unfair assessment to say that number one is a little murky.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well, that's not just me, you know, that's, why are we a little bit? There's been a lot of change, we're not here to.
It's interesting that I don't feel that way, so that's why I wanna know.
But you didn't, but you did not jump into this in, when the board was really did. You had a few years of the world, let's see, whatever that means.
I would say, I would say that our vision is strong. I don't think that's where I'm, kind of, not confused.
I guess I need to switch to.
Yes, how do we define clear goals? Because we haven't, I have been involved in that, you've been involved in that, the superintendent's evaluation of that. We have been involved in that, so I got.
It was like a dead little worm crawling along, too, because it wasn't holding to the timetable.
I think that's why you brought the finance up, because we know that, like, we just kind of threw it down, like, if we were to pick a subject, we threw that down because we know it's based on what the future is to bring. And, you know, for you, if you're losing students and we have to find ways to bring new revenue, okay, well, don't keep asking, you know, let's figure out how, you know what I mean? Like, and it would be nice to say, okay, our goal is to do this at the beginning of the year. And everything that we do as a board and the vision for, when we're listening to financial reports and some, the questions we're gonna ask are gonna be based on the vision that we set forward.
Is the vision for the, for the superintendent? Because I'm, I'm hearing different messages or so. Strategic plan is one thing. And what I'm hearing is, do we, are they identifying the goals for the superintendent? That's what the board would be working on and having clarity about what do they want from the, from the new superintendent for the first year. And it could be, have, you know, get a strategic plan process in place and started. So that could be one of your clearly defined goals, you know, or, and give us a good, I'm just throwing this out, am I in the?
No, yeah, absolutely.
So that, when I read this, I was seeing this from a perspective of defining clear goals toward that vision. So the vision has already been established, you know. You know, we wanna be a successful school system, we wanna have high-achieving students, we wanna provide X, Y, and Z, whatever it is, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, as the superintendent, the board, how, how are they holding the superintendent accountable to, what are the goals that they are establishing for the superintendent? That's when it's clearly defined.
And, and.
So that's the difference. So that's the clarity, is really you defining for your new superintendent, as Nick said, you're gonna be, you know, talking about, you're gonna have community member engagement, you're gonna be doing, so what are you, what are you expecting that first year from them? And it goes along with the conversation that Kristen and I were having. I said about the importance of the relationship building with the board president. And that they're gonna have to build that trust, and it's gonna have to, they're gonna have to really work on that. But as a board, it's part of their evaluation process. You're going to identify clear goals for them and be realistic about the first year of what those look like. So this is confusing in the sense that it's not, it's yes tied to a strategic plan. If you had one, then one of the goals would be, are they, are they doing the checks and balances and making sure that the strategic plan is moving forward?
That is precisely right.
Yeah, so that would be a very clear goal.
So that would be a clear goal from a board is, we developed this district strategic plan, and now we are gonna hold, one of those is, the expectation is that timelines won't go along like that worm, right? That the, that, that the expectation is that.
Well, you can do short-term or long-term, again, the same, you know.
Exactly, exactly.
And then just say where we're at. I always have a financial report comes back to us and they say, we're fifty percent through the whatever and the twenty-seven percent, that helps us to identify, you know, like, okay, and then she says, we're on track. I'm like, okay.
And there's progress monitoring that what happened with, with the goals from a strategic plan, right? But suppose you had, you had a goal from the data. And I think that's important, once you've established from your stakeholders and from student achievement data, enrollment data, once you have established that, you're really holding the superintendent accountable to make sure that there's, you know, reports on a fairly regular basis. You can't inundate the superintendent with reports every month, right? So for example, if a district, if you had, let's say, six goals, five goals in this year, then having it be chumped, right? To say, maybe one, every board meeting will have an update on what the progress is towards those goals. But you're not involved in the day-to-day accomplishment of those goals, and that's key. You're just gonna hold the superintendent accountable to that. And I wanna list something up that Sarah said as well. You have to be realistic, right? You've got a new, she's gonna be coming in, or he's gonna be coming in, and they are going to be drinking from a fire hose, even if they're most, the most experienced superintendent, right? I put Sarah up there with anyone, right? And it's, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, to get to know a community, to listen, to make sure you're identifying what those major, those major issues are. So I would challenge the board to try to have that goal list, to be fairly succinct with it, especially that first year. But it doesn't mean that that strategic planning process shouldn't be a part of it, because I think it absolutely can't. And quite honestly, if it's gone the right way, the superintendent will gain a wealth of knowledge around the district in a very short period of time, right?
So Nick, in the absence of a strategic plan, all of our superintendent search for consultants said, we can work with you to do that goal-setting session with your superintendent. Without a strategic plan, just play with it, what does that goal-setting session look like?
Well, I think it's precisely what we're talking about.
Like, any example?
Okay, so, so, it might say, you know, what are your expects, what would be your expectations for a new superintendent, right? And you might say, make sure that they are aware and are financially sound, and we have a balanced budget, right? It might be, we, we would like to get the process, we'd like you to bring a recommendation and a process for us to have a clear strategic plan when we go there, right? It might be, we expect you to get to know your staff, we expect you to be out and about and visible in the community. So it's gonna be a series of goals that they'll try to facilitate, and it'll also provide, I hope, they'll provide some reality checks, like, ew, that's a little much, right? But, you know, because you also wanna recognize you're, you're bringing this person in, hopefully, for the next ten years, right? I mean, that's, that's the goal. When you look at the research around student achievement, it is clear. Longevity around leadership positions, particularly the principals and the superintendents, make all the difference in the world. And that's what you, you witnessed, right? How many years did you have a phenomenal superintendent in Mike Washburn, right? How many years has Dan Dean been here and really done an amazing job? And that's why you're, in part, you, we can't forget, you have unbelievable staff that are dedicated to kids, that are super talented, the teachers in the classroom, the support personnel. It's all of that, that really does make a difference. But having everyone understand what the values, vision, ambition, and what the goals are will help the, help your organization, your school district, be more cohesive. I've seen it change the culture, I've seen it uplift folks, and I think that is inspiring and gives you hope, yeah.
Hey Nick, only because this is related to what you're talking about right now. And this is more of a personal need thing, is that as you were talking about the longevity of the administration, I just wanna share, because you probably all already know this, but I wanna reiterate, that I've worked for Caledonia for nineteen years. I love teaching and I am continuing to teach, and this is passionately important to me. Why would I leave a district where I have always a vision of retiring, loving everything about it? What made me do that, the way other teachers would also feel the same way? Because we are all connected throughout this day we talk, is the fact that I had five principals in ten years and seven superintendents during my time at Caledonia. The vision was never there, it was constantly changing. And I felt, I feel bad for the administrators trying to pick up pieces of the broken everything from the two-year principal before them and the two-year principal before them. So, I mean, if there's really anything, I, so you understand. So, I mean, if there's really anything I, so you understand me, I'm personally looking to, it's that we can find an administrator with longevity, because I think, I mean, there's a million reasons, I'm sure, for the secrets of Forest Hill's success, but that has gotta be a very, very big one.
Yeah. Kristen, you're exactly right. And I appreciate you lifting that up from your personal experience. And I want to lift up this board for having these conversations, right? For struggling with, you know, what does it mean, what does the research say? What does it mean for us? Because the more you can be unified as a board, the more attractive this district will be of finding that right person that will want to stay. And that's so important. You know, you talk about, we are in a different world and facing a lot of different pressures. I would throw it out there. And making sure that we're clear about our role as a board and not trying to get into a different lane will make a difference on that very thing, on longevity, on student outcomes. That's why we're reviewing that research now. And I want to try to also keep us on track. So I want to get other people's thoughts and ideas on there. Anything else from Holly or Valerie?
I wanted to bring up, like, even on the danger side, I think for me, let me see what number it is, hold on a second. The external pressures is the main reason and negative comments. And I think, this is just me personally seeing what we have. We have a lot of safety and fear-driven subjects being pushed on us in our community. And instead, I would love to see the positive switched around, you know, because I think that's dangerous. Because that's all people talk about, is what if this and, you know, and then the things that push them. And I was just telling Valerie, I'd like to do a telemarketing time somebody says the word safe or safety. Because that's all I've been hearing since I've been on the board from the community and everywhere else. And I would love to see if we could turn that around into a positive of just saying, this is what we have in place, this is the plans, this is the vision, this is the goals that we have. And stop, it's like when you keep using the same negative fear, monitoring-driven words over and over again. That's what it instills in people. And then the blaming game starts. Well, you're to blame for that or because that's not happening. You know, it's like, I think sometimes the danger signs of what we even put in the atmosphere and what we pump out, what it does is it makes the masses kind of feel that way. And then you keep hearing the same repetitive stuff over and over again. And you're like, okay, let's change, like, you know, as a coach, if you say, we're gonna win because we're one man down, we're gonna lose because we're one man down, I say, guys, we're gonna win because we're one man down. You want to know why y'all get more plugging, you know what I mean? There's ways to turn it around to make it more positive.
It's being encouraging and being proactive with what it is we're doing, presuming a positive foot forward, right? And not so much being reactionary. Guess what? It is, we are living in reactionary, right? So, you know, someone has a complaint and they go to the paper and now all of a sudden you have to have a special meeting on cell phone talent, right? I mean, that is kind of the reality that we're all living in. So the more that we can have a really clear, positive foot forward and try to be as proactive as we can, knowing that there will be instances where, you know, Sarah, the new superintendent's gonna have to lean on you to say, and there's a case study that we'll say, that, you know, I'm gonna do the best that I can to give you the information, but you also have to trust me that it's not that I'm not trying to communicate with you, right? It's that we had a bus accident and I had half an hour to call all the parents, make sure the bus drivers got to the hospital, right? And, you know, I did text the superintendent, or the board president, and, you know, I might have to lean on you so that you can make sure everyone else is aware. It's those types of things that some grace has been needed. And that's why if we can get to a spot where we can all agree that this is how we're gonna operate, that will help everybody. Okay. Anything, any other comments? Okay. The superintendent.
Yes, I think we've covered most everything. I mean, I put an exclamation point on the whole characteristics, because I was like, they're all important. I can't really pull one on, go, oh, that's not as important. Like, they're all very important. And then we talked a quick bit about, as Sarah mentioned a little bit ago, about really working with the new superintendent to establish that relationship and foster those bonds of trust among everybody, that we're all in this together and we're all moving forward in the same direction. And, you know, regarding the whole vision, like, you're right, we've had a vision for a long time and it's served us very well. I don't think anybody's unhappy with our vision, but we have been in a position of not having a strategic plan. And I think that causes some issues, because again, we're like, how do we know if we're achieving those goals? How do we know if, you know, what are we evaluating the superintendent on if we don't have things specifically written down? And because we haven't had one, I think that's gonna be a challenge moving forward. When we do get one, to reorient ourselves on, okay, we're using this document as our guiding principle here to move forward. So it'll be an interesting time to make sure everybody gets on the same page and learns how to do their board role through that process.
Yeah. And I, you know, I'll say, you have to give yourself a little grace. It's not gonna happen overnight, right? And it's continuing to engage in these conversations and learning and growing together that I would encourage and hope you'll be able to continue on. Because you're picking up things for people and I think that's critically important on what they're thinking. So gotta give yourself a little grace, but you'll get there.
Can I play off of what you just said there, Kristen, for a moment? It draws my attention to danger sign number 11, to not hire a superintendent who agree with their vision. And, you know, when I read that statement, I thought, who does that? And then I thought immediately of a district I know who did that very thing. And then, you know, obviously it didn't work out. And why would they do that? But also, it could be because they don't know their vision or their vision isn't communicated clearly. So I mean, the superintendent may feel that they've been hired to fulfill a vision that they didn't understand in the first place, or maybe that the board didn't understand. But I thought, why would you do that?
Yeah. And to that point, I think it's important, as Mary said, when you're working with the consultant, to be clear about what those goals are, right? And because that'll ensure there's continuity of expectations. You know, sharing this document, having her contribute to this document, those are all gonna be important first steps to get that relationship right. And you'll have, I'm guessing, several rounds of interviews and you'll be running the process, right? So you really need to know the person, hopefully making sure that you're checking that his vision or her vision is aligned with your vision and the district's vision.
Just a quick add, like, when we hired Dan, our vision or our mission, I always mix it up, is all learners are achieving individual potential. That was a 2000 Millennium Task Force thing. So I think the superintendent comes in and says, my vision to execute that or to ensure we're doing that is this. And Dan's was this, 21st century learning, project-based, project-based philosophy, rethinking secondary classroom. You know what I mean? So I don't think it's the vision of the district per se. I think that's what we all got involved in. But then asking that superintendent, what is your vision as to how we continue that going? Makes sense?
It does.
So two different implications of vision.
Yeah, I love that you explain that, because honestly, school visions are very obvious.
What we want all students to achieve.
And we think our vision is 21st century learning. Who knows? This might, our girl might come in and say, we have a special concoction and everybody's going to be happy for the rest of their lives.
Yeah.
And so, remember, T is gonna be 21st century, right?
Yeah.
But you don't have to say so all day. It's something for our daughters. We didn't say they want to do superintendent, they want 21st century vision. They knew we needed the next step. That was a big phrase that was going around our table, but that was the way that Dan told us we'd like to make that next step happen, and we said, sounds good.
What I like when you bring that up too, Mary, it reminds me of what we did have going for our strategic plan while we were developing what we wanted, and that is to be the cutting-edge leader of things. We don't want to just be there now. We want to be the exemplar for others.
And I would rely on my friend Sarah. So, you know, super person doesn't necessarily, you know, exist. And obviously, that will run with Dan's.
I don't, I'm not gonna hire somebody that can do everything right away. They, I said, you have to give them an honor and you have to give them time. And so, we've talked about strategic planning and I said, the thing is that the first year, they have to build relationships, they have to build trust. I've been able to make some changes along the way, because I know what's best as far as practice. But if I was the new super coming in, I wouldn't have been able to do some of the things I did in the fall, because I needed to build the trust with staff. And that's what the new superintendent is going to do.
Yeah. And you have really talented people within the organization. If you ask me that question, my response is, I want to develop a process to ensure that the vision is aligned with our stakeholders in the data. And then my job will be, once we have that, is to make sure that we're executing that. You know, that fits our culture, right? I don't think the, yeah, so I'll leave it at that. But you're right, it has to be a part of that upfront conversation embedding process. So, okay. Anything else? I think this is the last group, CJ.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah, I mean, echoing a lot of that has been said. I guess the only thing, it was more for me, because Mary, you know, just checks the whole sheet and the back, you know, for all of these things. But yes, and I mean, we both did, none of this is new information, things we haven't seen before. All of these things to make sense, yes, that would be highly effective. Yes, that would be something that would be dangerous probably to do. The one question I had with the, was number four, with the effective characteristics, where it calls to like the collaborative relationship with staff and community. Really, at least from my perspective of being greener and being brought into this time where community and staff engagement or perception of what the board does is usually not fully correct. But they think that going, as you said before, to a board member is the way to get things done and that's the way to address a concern or all of that. And where I think that some of that is healthy, some of that is relationship building, some of that is trust building and that that is a role. And it's also, there's the other side of it saying, you really shouldn't be doing that. And that's not your job and that they shouldn't be coming to that. You should just turn them away. And so that's, I feel, at least have been personally conflicted there. I see it as a good thing, if it's done the right way, maybe. I don't know, but it's your thoughts on that.
You know, it's a great, it really is a great big dilemma, right? Right? You're like a school board, you're not being, you feel like you have to be engaged with your constituents, staff is included in that, and you should. And, you know, if they, you could be engaged in developing relationships, going to a concert, right? And, you know, going to, you know, parent-teacher conferences, right? You never take your board hat off. So even when they say, oh, I'm just here as a parent, doesn't exist. I'm sorry, it just doesn't, right? When you're interacting with staff, you are a board member first. And it's just the way it is. But I think it's how you engage, which is the important piece in what we're talking about here. You know, when they say, oh, I want to tell you about this, that's what you, you know, you can lean in on. Tell me more about who you've talked to, right? Like, what, how have you tried to solve the problem, right? If a problem exists. And I know it kind of gets to that chain of command, which maybe has a pejorative notion, but it really does make a difference. And so there are different ways I think you can engage with staff and be supportive. I think, I'm getting a bit nervous about stuff, but if you do the right strategic planning process, you're engaging with staff, right? You're getting data from the focus groups, you're getting data from comprehensive surveys. That's engaging with staff and saying, we care what you say. We want to listen to you. And here's a plan that was driven based on the data you provided us, right? And so that's how I would interpret that engagement with staff, if not necessarily so much one-on-one.
Well, the other thing we talked about that with though is, I think that is an agreement you come to with your superintendent. What does that look like to you? How do we support each other? Because when Mike came, again, Mike's history was this district was a shambles. And he said, you talk to me. You don't talk to my cabinet, you don't talk to my administrators. I will find out whatever you want. And it worked fine. And then Dan came in and he is transparent as the day is long. And he said, you go talk to whoever you want. And CJ and I were joking, I think the happy medium is somewhere in between, but there has to be an understanding about how that works. And maybe that's one of those questions. How do you see that playing out with your board and your community? That you want, you know, the constituents to be part of the data giving, right?
That's really, really well said.
Yeah.
Because by far, most of the conversations are, I'm not the person that you should be talking to.
Yeah, right.
I'm not who you want here, so if you've done this, all those things that you said. And again, I think that is fine, that if they, if you can help somebody else get into the district the right way or whatever, so that can build a relationship. But I think that's part of what the culture is now, is not just with staff, not just with community, but more so maybe than it was five years ago or 20 years ago. I can just email this person to get the answer that I'm looking for. And I think it takes probably everybody and a superintendent to try to help reestablish that that's not the norm.
And know that that's not unique to courses, right? It is, I'm seeing it, we have 16 local districts that are within our ISB. I'm seeing that district hit district and it's a constant struggle. And that's why constant conversations need to make the development of the relationship between the board president and the superintendent is critically important. Not that everyone isn't important to the superintendent, but just out of sharing time and energy and, you know, that's that conduit that has to happen. And then, you know, the board president helps with the other communications with the board members and that sort of thing. So that's a really, it's a really good point and know there's misery in company, yeah.
Well, the thing that I appreciate about our team is that if I have a question, like, if somebody's been at a meeting, I feel like I can call and talk to them, even if we don't see eye to eye on it, still can have that conversation. I've heard from other board members in other school districts, they're not allowed to go to a certain meeting. And then they ask for communication, they don't know how to break through. Like, they're not even, I'm like, how are you, are you just sitting in a seat on autopilot? And they go, that's what we feel like. And they've been told like, don't talk to this, don't talk to staff, or if they've probably had some Mike Washburns they dealt with and things. But I feel like at the end of the day, and I think that we kind of talked about this, it kind of goes based on the strong shared beliefs. And I feel like there's a belief system that we all come from, you know, religiously, from our homes and stuff that we bring to the table and values, and there's some belief systems, the other ones that we run into, I think, you know, in community. But I think from the master, I feel like, I don't feel like I can't pick up the phone, even if I disagree with somebody, still can pick up the phone and say, hey, please, please help me understand. Or I don't, you know, like, no, this is how I feel about it, but I still can carry something away a little bit from that. And I mean, I do appreciate that, because when you hear the stories about other schools in our surrounding county community and I'm thinking, yikes, like, you can't, you can't even call that person. Nope, they don't tell me anything.
I can't.
No. I can't even vote.
But our only employee is the superintendent, so if they want us to do that, we honor that. If it doesn't work, that shows up on a strategic plan that we have to find a better communication sound. Because it worked great with Mike. It was no problem. We got whatever he wanted in short order. And again, he made a lot of work for himself in that way. Dan probably made work for himself in the fact that now he had to manage personalities and how that information is today. So we just have to come to an agreement with whatever it is. And whatever it is, we can make it work.
But I think it helps, it's an approachable, Sarah's very approachable, Valerie's very approachable. Even like yesterday, I know I had to say to Julie, Julie, you know, I'm being a little hard, but this is, like, this is where I need to overturn some rocks here. She's, yeah, I know that. Okay. And I know, you know what I mean? Like, I just feel like, at the end of the day, we're all individuals, but at the same time, we can come together in a team for, you know, for the goals of this. And yeah, I mean, there's seven different personalities in this room that you have to work effectively with together.
And that's a great example. And depending on the volume of information that is required of one board or another, you know, I'll share a personal experience. When I got on a particular board, there was someone that was steeped in finance, brilliant, brilliant, and would ask a series of questions that required extensive research, which was fine. And it got to the point where he had this volume of information that no other board member stands, right? And so we came to an agreement that if one person from the board is asking them a particular item that we're voting on, that that information is shared with everyone, right? And what it did was a couple of things. One, you know, the board president was like, how much time did it take you to do all this, right? And it was okay, because that's what he needed at that time. But over time, you know, it was at the point where there was a growing comfort level, that the information was being transparent, that it was open, everyone had it, and that we can move forward together. And so the, you know, the questions and those things didn't follow together, but it diminished, you know, over time. And that's because the relationship got built, right? Okay. We are running fast here. So I'm gonna, there's more documentation on our goals and responsibilities by M A S B. I would encourage you, I have no time, to review that. But we're gonna skip that portion, because I really do want to keep us on task. And I want you to take the forest notes down. So here's how we're going to kind of digest this. We're gonna do it, again, in. We're gonna do it, again, individually, right? And we're gonna then come collectively using sticky notes. So we're gonna start with the norms document. And again, norms by their definition are ways of operating, expectations, working agreements. We're going to have you kind of check a box and say, great as is. You might have a question mark around something that's in that portion of it, that you just want clarification. Doesn't mean you're not gonna still support that as it's written. And then, if there's something you think that is missing, and again, you have six different documents we're gonna be doing this with. If there's something that's missing, put that on the sticky notes well. You might say, good, and what about? Okay, does that make sense?
Say one more time, I'm so sorry. What, what you specifically want on the sticky notes?
Same, what I would like on the sticky notes, if you're good with it as is, a checkbox. One checkbox.
On the sticky notes.
And then you're gonna place that.
Okay, gotcha.
On the notes. If you are, have a need for clarification, just put a question mark, and just jot down what that need is. Or if you think it's good, but you would add something, a checkmark, and add that. And then we're gonna all put our sticky notes underneath the norms. We're, we're gonna start with the norm document, okay? Thanks for that, any clarification, because I'm sure others had that question too.
Register one at a time, right?
Correct, when you're done, and you want to put it up there?
I'm not doing it, right? I'm pulling out one more. Are all three of those the same?
We have three checks.
And, yes, they are the same, the same just.
What is there? For discussion, I just.
Yeah.
I pulled out one more out of it, like, that was, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, here's, are we, are we good? Are you going, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Why don't you keep going?
No, I need to go.
Well, I'd like, just so we can have some clarity and discussion around this. So I've got three, well, I've got lots of checkmarks. I do have three that actually, in discussing with Kristen as well, removing the part that says, and one that had not been addressed by past boards. And, and the reason, it just doesn't, to me, again, we're talking about that positivity moving forward. I don't think there's a necessity to add what potentially was or was not addressed by that. So, but I also have two other, one says equitable, equitable, equitability, equitable, thank you. Were you the English teacher?
I am one of these.
Yes.
You're surrounded by.
As a A P calculus guy, I need all the English I can.
You can draw an equation up there for you.
Okay, and then transparency. So the wondering is, again, I think the majority has checks, but there was two wonderings around transparency and.
Equitably.
Equally, thank you.
I wouldn't call that a wondering, I just emphasized that I thought it was important to be there. That's major point.
Okay.
Mine's not the negative, mine's positive, like, that's the norm, like, you want it, so that's how I knew that, you know.
Okay, where, where, I'm seeing thumbs up with transparency and equitably.
Right, it is.
Where in the document would you put that?
I think they're in thirty days.
Okay.
I didn't understand, so I disagree.
You're highlighting.
I'm highlighting, yes, that's why I think I did it wrong myself.
Emphasizing. I got you, I got you.
Yes. Are we, are we still doing the check?
Yeah, my mistake, and I want to clarify. So this is like, check here is good, don't change it.
Oh.
A check with something on it is like, good, but change this, right? So on these three, and I think everyone's agreeing, we're gonna check and eliminate, and the one that was not addressed by past boards. And then these two are checks, and there's an emphasis that they like, you like.
Right, I thought you did point at that, and I thought you were still on that.
I'm so sorry, left a bad handle, what did you say about past boards? Sorry.
We're gonna remove that.
In that second paragraph.
Remove the second paragraph.
No, something. I didn't say that. Just so you know, because we didn't need it, the world has changed since 2016, and that's just how we operate.
Positively, positively moving forward, okay? So does everyone now have, now, better understanding of what we're doing? Yeah, okay, my apologies. Let's go to professionalism.
Number six, I'll have this.
I just didn't have them just because, I'm only first one, I'm just wanting to say I have to be a board officially sworn in, so it can't be, you know. Who was their first day of board service?
I love it.
So just adding that.
Just, you know, just clarifying that they really, it has to be, it can't be before their first day, because they have to be sworn in board.
Perfect, I like that.
So that's all.
Yeah, but.
To go to them?
Yeah, you play a reputation.
I don't think so, that's why, that's why.
Because you're not going for graduation.
That's a, I never, you're not a board member until you're sworn in. So you're getting sworn in, I'm pretty sure. This doesn't give you much time anyway, that's like one month in December during Christmas. Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, so we have, all eight have opine. We have one that said, check, but do we want to require any professional development? So it's a question for the group.
Well, so highly encouraged versus required is the question, right? Whatever it says, yeah. Because it says highly encouraged right now.
Right.
And I know, we learned Clarkson Schools has a written policy, so just.
Well, that would be, because that's the difference between the norm and an actual policy, where the norm expectation is that we are all learners, and we all should aspire to be engaging in these things. And then if we choose to be actually making a policy that says you have to conduct this or that, is that how that works?
Well, and, you know, professional learning looks a lot of different ways, right? Sometimes it's going to a conference, right? Sometimes it's, it's the superintendent having a dialogue, a conversation around a particular article, right? So it doesn't, usually when you think of professional learning, it's this big commitment to do X. This is professional, we're learning, we're learning from one another, right? And so if you do change it to require, it doesn't specify like exactly what it could look like, it just offers a lot of different forms.
I think also putting a require in there means that it has to be measurable in some way. Who's gonna, who's gonna check that box? Who's gonna like ensure and then issue some kind of consequence for not?
Well, I think that's, he checks the box. Yeah, but they go, it's easy to check, but it's the consequence.
It's the consequence, it just feels like.
Are you gonna stir in negative, look?
It just, it just feels like, there's no reason to have that word in there, when you can't really do anything about it anyway.
You can make it right, because there are expectations, it's an encouragement, but stronger than mandatory. And you're just talking about under, under five, right?
Right.
Mary, yes.
Yeah, yeah, right.
The one that would be nice to see is as a new school board member, is like, I'm not gonna say like a cartoon, but an animated thing that shows you how things work. Like the bond issue, and this goes into this, and you know what I mean? Like to actually visually see something, it sort of emits a lot of information. So I almost feel like in professionalism, if you're gonna have engaging classes that you would like to say to require, I think would be, how do things work so you're sitting there listening to me? That you actually understand it, because you can go back and watch it, I mean, like, like there's always.
Kind of like how a bill becomes a law, everyone knows that, right? Like you can all recite that, because of that little constitution. But I do, I do think that M A S B does have online video training too. I don't, I, to be honest with you, I haven't really bruised it at very late.
But I'm a creative learner, sitting in a lecture, you know, I mean, like, that's, that's, that's too long, it's like, like, where's the snacks, you know? And so, yeah, so but I think if you have the visual thing, I think what it does is, you know, people gratitude to it, you learn fast for it, so.
Okay, so.
My question with this one was that I really thought that the focus was on these having the one-on-one fundamentals. It's not about all professional learning. It's really just about, before you get, you know, a year into your service, you really have a professional responsibility to have taken one-on-one.
Yes.
That's how I wrote this.
It's just an easy, all encompassing, you've been exposed to a lot of your responsibilities about.
Yeah, exactly.
And what we've all learned.
So the question, because I need to move us along a little bit. So instead of required, what was the suggestion?
Expect.
Expect, is that okay? To make that change? Okay.
CJ, are you hesitating?
No, no, no.
Okay, it was a.
No, yeah, yeah, that's great.
Highly recommended, you think.
Yeah, well, I expect.
That's what it said, yeah.
Expectation.
And that was underneath number five?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple other ones here, a suggestion to add community members underneath one and two. So respect, maintain, not limited to school board members, superintendent, administrators, teachers, staff, and community members.
I actually thought about adding students to number two too, originally, I didn't write that one, but.
To number one?
I missed it.
It makes you say that we would have to put that in there, it's just a given, but yes, that's.
Okay. So is there, is there consensus about adding students and community members to number one?
Yes.
All right?
Well, I have a question. What, what, I'm just wondering, what role are we talking about, community members, when this one is about within the school system?
Well, you have, you have community members that might come and speak at public conference.
Right, or volunteer.
Right, or that's part of the school ecosystem.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yeah.
It's talking about the roles within the school.
Well, volunteers have roles, I'm just saying, just in case, I would assume that's part of our community.
Okay, how about for number two, adding community members?
Wait, to not obviously criticize the employee, anybody, yeah, more and students, yeah, yes, all of that, anybody.
So specifically, is it okay just to add community members, or do you want to add others?
I said students and community members.
Okay, so we're gonna do the same thing, students and community members.
Can we all agree with that?
Okay, all consensus heads, heads nodding, okay? I have one that says, a clarification, meet with personnel only after notifying soup. Which one is that?
Three. I have one too.
Yeah, two. I remember that only just because I desire to live within the norm that we're setting, and not, you know, so is it like, I mean, right, somebody, you pass somebody who's a teacher, and a friend?
That's what I put on my post.
And you, sorry, I'm not allowed to chat with you until I, you know, to ask after she was okay. You know, and this whole idea, the other conversation piece that we were talking about, where that's a relationship building thing, and we don't want to do it the right way.
The intent more behind this one was like, not to just go, hey, you know, teacher, I want to have a meeting with you to talk about something, to talk about issue. Not just like, meet randomly and say hi.
Clarified in no phrasing.
Okay.
It is a little scary.
Kristen, how might be clarified?
Great question, right? Well, I was thinking about a phrase before the word meet.
Yeah.
In regard to something.
Again, I think, yeah, we probably all have the same.
In regard to schedule issues.
Maybe a scheduled meeting on subjects that are required.
What this is right now, it's an expectation, you're gonna meet with district personnel, I don't like that as an expectation at all, that should rarely happen. You know, it's not a job to go talk to district personnel at a board, so I think, I think it has to be rethought, because it's gonna happen, but right now it does not leave the writing message.
Yeah.
It's like, when, when you need to go talk to a staff member, check first.
Yeah, well, then you're not supposed to be going.
Correct, that's why I said it's a little, but I hear you, because there's times we need to, so what does that look like? I don't have any idea, but there you go.
There's also times that staff members, you know, and you've asked to schedule the.
But we shouldn't.
Oh, yeah, I know.
We should not do that. I mean, for your parent-teacher conference, yes, but we should never reach out to staff members, never reach out to those going on in this issue.
Right, it's not our, it's not our home.
So.
No, I think CJ, my thought was like. This one was so that, you know, if you felt like you did need to go out and talk to a teacher about an issue, all right, you're gonna have to run that through the superintendent first.
Or teacher says, Mary, I want somebody that understands this, I want to tell you this.
What just happened was, when they reach out to you, then we'll call, you need to call Dan and say, what do you think? He'd say, go ahead. So I mean, if there's no way to say, maybe have it, have, I don't know.
More just clarification. If, if a staff member approaches you, approaches you, go ahead though.
Yeah, well, yeah, probably just the superintendent, yes.
Okay, so I want to ask a question. I, I'm walking down the hall in Scotts here, and I said, hey, can I just ask you a quick question? I gotta go to the superintendent's house.
It says meet with district personnel, no, totally, okay.
That's what's formal, be planned, planned meet. But that's, I think, where my question was, I have to follow on.
Yeah. Subject matter that you would, you would want to be.
So I think we agree, like, informal or the, the conversation like that, but it's really the situation of when perhaps somebody approaches one of us to say, hey, I want to bring you into this situation, now. hey, I want to bring you into this situation now, I want you to weigh in and tell us and give us whatever. But clearly that's not what we would be entertaining without telling the superintendent, somebody asked us to do this.
Or have a conversation with her, right? Seeking guidance, how should we approach this?
But it's not nice to limit conversations, okay? Be respectful, they gave us community.
I have another second, just give this a break for a little bit. You guys remember Tony, it isn't mentioned on here or maybe it's mentioned elsewhere, but that had happened with me and it does make me curious, is union representation. And encountering union representation in the hall and them wanting to say something to you, wasn't there something that happened?
Well, it was collective bargaining and we were, we were in negotiations and you, and several of you had, um, had people addressing you and I suggested, very careful, because we're gonna learn to, um.
Right, which I had no idea and had never been.
You are a board member, as they said, that hat never comes off. So even though they live next door to you, you're still a board member.
Yeah.
And so what can happen is it will be perceived as the board was negotiating outside of the negotiation statement.
Well, it's just something that I thought I, I hadn't heard, realized until you said something, and that could have been a major problem.
It could have been a major problem.
So.
And it was innocent, it was not a deliberate, you know, tried to sabotage anything, but.
Yep, just a basic conversation, but making sure that all board members are aware.
I was just gonna say, I will take this opportunity to once again say, that is like, that, that labor relations workshop that we went to in February, it was so, so helpful because that was just, I just didn't know any of that really. Uh, and so that, I think that was paramount, I mean, that is amazing information.
Yeah, is that in that C, uh, one-on-one?
It's not, it's.
They offer it.
Okay.
They offer it, like it's a separate standalone workshop, simply on, um, collective bargaining.
Okay.
So should we, would it work to just changes to participate in meetings with district staff, blah, 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 because then it's showing it's a little bit more formal action.
Participate in the action, because you have to.
You're right.
Yeah. And can I, this is just a, uh, wondering I have. Do board members attend staff meetings?
No, no, no.
We've been invited before to come to certain special things that.
On Monday.
Not staff meetings.
Not staff meetings.
We're invited on, we're invited on Monday, go to.
But that's, that's not a staff meeting.
So, so if, if it's, if, if that's the case and that's the practice, then let's, let's not put too much detail.
Right, okay, exactly.
So I like Kristin, what you were saying, can you repeat that?
It was participate in a meeting with district personnel only after notifying the superintendent.
Okay.
And period, and then just give her the rest.
That's perfect, did you have, were you writing that down?
I wanted that, yeah.
Okay, I'm just out of time, I want to keep going, okay? So there's a question about within the first month after being sworn in on the CBA class, but I think we can get legal clarification on that, so.
Yeah, I just, I just think that they need to be sworn in before they can be taking the class.
Yeah, and if that's the case, then we can make that adjustment, is that, everyone's okay with that?
Yeah, I think within the first two months.
Yeah, 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 that's why I'm saying, it's not, you can't do it like. But you know, to have that.
You're sworn in, you have to be sworn in within so many days.
Right.
And that's a way to start.
Yes.
That's a fun.
Three, five on the back.
So there should be a window.
Okay. Do we got a walkthrough meeting to, I mean, because we're behind schedule?
Um, it's, it's up to you.
Maybe after, after.
But we also, I want to, yeah, you don't want to. Okay. Uh, we have something on number five about quote self-evaluation, is there just a question about?
I simply said, it says annual self-evaluation, and we already didn't do it this year. So if we're gonna write stuff like this down, we need to do it, you know what I mean? We did not self-evaluate this year, we did that two years ago.
So just put through self-evaluations?
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we're gonna put it in there, then we need to do it, because we did, we did not do it annually so far, and I'm not.
Or you could just, um.
Yeah.
Just take it out of the annual.
Yeah, we just take it out for now, but I wish we would do it by the end.
I would say keep it in, just knowing.
We can't keep it in and just go.
Yeah, do it.
Okay. Okay, and the last one, the last note here is clarify publicly on two.
I just did like publicly, I just don't know whether you criticize anybody because I'm public.
No, just simply.
Just take it out publicly, don't criticize.
Okay, is everyone, I'm hearing, seeing some nods? Just criticize, it infers publicly?
Surely you feel like.
If it infers, it's okay for you to criticize, just don't do it publicly.
It is, but it almost infers or implies that you should.
It's a board norm, it's an expectation, it's a high road.
So are we okay with that or not?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we have a question, what is, what if, is, this just happens, meet, notify, okay, we did that. Before is ridiculous, I re, uh, require first term. What is, can Mary, is that you, the CBA within a couple of months?
Yeah, this, oh, I was gonna clarify that too.
Oh, okay, oh, perfect, okay.
It's in the first three months.
Okay.
So they made a commitment to run, to be on the board, part of being on the board is having that knowledge base so that they're successful.
Yeah, perfect, okay. All right, governance. I don't know, I hope, I hope it's hot, so maybe at the end of this one, you grab some food and you don't mind working through it a little bit.
Anybody has a, um, beverage pot? Perhaps I can help out next door here, but you have like coconut products, so if you'd like to, I could.
Should we find the next one if we?
Yeah, that would be helpful, just keep rolling, yep. We might grab some pizza and dinner. Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, we're working, yeah. You hiding it?
Yeah, well, heading to case.
Let's go, sir. Oh, yeah.
Government.
Building trust.
Sorry, if anybody gets anything, it's probably.
I'm gonna say pharmacist's trust, interesting. Should we share it? And I love that Ford told me, yeah, well, it's not like dude, I wish. Remember when we were the one, the new Ford said, tell me what I want to, I would be like, oh, my. So much clearer. Isn't that funny?
I was on the drive on the way over here, texting Brad, told me.
No, thank you, I, I'd love to marry you.
Well, I do that, and I go. So why, because you can drive back and drive. I'm so excited here, so I go. So he was like comfortable, has he had a, because he's like. Like I'm not sure. But he, he didn't tell everybody that he's, he's a punch poker, so.
No, it's never. That's okay.
Well, I guess we can share that. It's the wrong word, like. I am straight.
Well, just to make that math.
You're not, you're not.
Thank you, that, that's my fault.
You're not, you're not, no. Oh, I couldn't want to. It's scary, it's scary. Tell you, you know, you can't do it. I'm telling you right now.
I don't want, I don't do can't, Mary, well.
No, I'm saying no, I didn't say can't, I said no.
I actually appreciate that.
It's a real shame. All watched it today, Mary. Because they are leaving. Just to keep them warm, so. Right, okay. Definitely said that I'm not able to listen, person.
Yeah.
So I have to be scheduled to do that.
You have to schedule. Re-observations that were already closed on Wednesday. Or whatever.
Yay.
I was just wondering. As I, oh, what, I was saying. Apparently we're all in a war room and you made a decision.
Apparently.
I have a headache, you all have a headache. War room is so.
I mean, my ninth grader sort of.
That's not.
I was like, say no. Yeah, they, they got us all the time.
So the new. See, I'm here, one whole breakfast, calling, that doesn't mean, that's where we go. And we're cooking our words right now.
Is everyone else announced yet?
So guys, who could declare it into communication, yeah, we're missing stickies.
I'm, I'm missing one sticky for governance.
Well, and community meeting, right?
Two, four, six, yeah, and one for communication.
And two for planning, it doesn't matter.
I have, I have one government right now.
I have.
Over there, he has a whole building over there.
That, right? And I asked him.
I didn't know you had it, but he's been here since December twenty nine.
Who's your name? Or what's your?
Has yours started, it's there? I just not helping it next to one.
Is that at Quoel? At Quoel?
Yeah.
How was the whole spectrum of Quoel transition?
Good.
It's yours. Yeah, it probably affects you as well.
Only a little bit, not very much.
Yep.
And I even did like a podcast on my office. I would get two crazy things.
From a perspective, right, so our team really is only downside and naturally leaders have chosen. Three days. Now we're down to, but like the other place was. You do, you're more layers.
Like we take two right away.
And then we get full holders and one was one. Okay, maybe that's what I want by bringing huge.
I love you better.
And I need a lot of work than actually working on these things.
But I've always been great.
To really make money.
We're not gonna deep, where we never.
I'm really too long.
Yeah, it's like a. Really? I mean, honestly, you guys, I love, I love that, so. I'll try it out, guys.
I mean, I just, I didn't think the board would do it, you know, maybe.
Yeah.
World will step up, open, it's what I'm afraid of, Caroline, so I don't think they can expect them.
It's tussling.
It's like, and I have no concept. I mean, we, so that I've been there.
Some of the weight that we.
That's what I think I can pass it off.
I don't know if I've ever had. This is definitely bigger than. I've been around people that have it, I think they all remember.
I think.
What was Mystic, planning, and mattering?
Planning.
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 We have, we do have a couple of listings.
Yep.
And just wanna make sure everyone had an opportunity, so I know everyone has reviewed, so.
Somebody with a blue sticker.
Mystic, uh. I think it was, oh, okay, so I'll have all board members weigh in, I think Sarah can paint the stick. So.
Yeah, I didn't put any.
Okay.
I figured that.
That's perfect, that's perfect. Okay. Um, so we should be good to go here, so on governance, we look really, I think, pretty good. There is a couple of questions, I think someone added a comma after rather.
Wow.
English teacher.
Um, I have one that says, on number one, student achievement dot 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 question and well being question.
That's me. We are now facing issues that await beyond cause rates, yes, well, I mean, are you putting well being there? Because definitely some of our issues are not about academic performance.
Actually, we would have a exclamation point somewhere.
Well, that was important.
So, for that governance, if you wanted to follow along, and the question is, can we add student achievement and well being?
How do you measure that, though?
Quant, qualitatively?
All deadly, right? That's just as on top of mind.
It's a responsibility, I mean, it's just, are we dealing in a. Yeah.
As board?
We do all the time, we have quantitative and qualitative. So are students seeing a rising uptick in performance issues or behavioral issues in the classroom, and do we, what we do with our, you know, behavior liaison, which we have the right resources in place, we're talking about that stuff all the time.
Can you read the whole sentence with that?
Yeah, can someone read the whole sentence?
Always put students first, when making decisions, keep student achievement and well being as the main focus of board actions. I guess, whatever.
I have the same thought when I read it, and the word, I came to mind safety, and I was like, you know, like, I think well being says like, well.
Okay, I'm looking at everyone, are you okay with adding well being? Okay? Are you, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'm okay, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Uh, number three, it says, discuss with stakeholders.
I don't love that. Well, I don't think we're, superintendent tells something, we should be going, talking to stakeholders about it, that is not our job.
Yeah.
Unless they're brought to us, we have presentations by staff all the time, and for us to go out and say, hey, I heard from the superintendent and you're the teacher, and I'm about to tell you the side of the story, I don't like.
What about like, and when appropriate, to discuss with stakeholders?
Oh, yeah, with superintendent input, or as part of the, or just randomly say, I'm gonna go do my own.
Or just hear from stakeholders, I think the intent of it is just that we have received input from them when we make decisions, not that we specifically went out and did a.
Incorporate stakeholder.
Incorporate, yeah, all right.
Okay, so, can you catch that?
Yeah.
Incorporating stakeholder input.
Yeah, I'm gonna put a choice in the same sentence, but you'll figure it out, incorporate something from stakeholders.
Okay. Or here, I think CJ said, here from stakeholders, something like that. Do I, I'm nodding, consensus there?
Or stakeholders.
Okay. Uh, and then, on number ten, the suggestion is take out we will.
Oh, romantic agreement, sorry, that was just like the common, because it says, as a governing body, not immediately to resolution of problems, rather refer these concerns to superintendent.
Okay.
So it's just similar.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I left it come, I did that too.
Oh, well, then in that case, you should not be using a semicolon before the rather.
It needs to be, it's incomplete, I think it was.
We also, a couple other items underneath governance, if you could, uh.
The man, the semantics, we'll clean that up.
Number two, change or omit, uh, change, it says equity to values? Or socio emotional to character and well being, is that said?
Character, well, I didn't know, so I was trying to find a different word, because I think, you know, we're at the stage of growing, changing and positive, and I think people would just, I, I just think, you know, it says commit to academic accountability, educational value, and character.
So here's why I would disagree with that, because those are the terms that are used within the district.
Right.
So, I mean, for staff and students to understand what's being referenced, it should be the language that they use.
And the word value is different than the word equity.
That's true.
Say it again, CJ.
Well, educational value means something differently than educational, I think it was specifically saying, so that we get all students, that everybody receives.
So we're providing every student with what they need to be successful, is the equity piece.
So are you suggesting that we change that to what you just said?
No, I'm trying to clarify one. I agree with using the word equity, because I think it is different than educational value, I mean, I think educational value is important as well, but I think it's important that we're saying, we are committed to giving each student what they need to be successful.
Other thoughts or discussions? I, you know, I will, I will say that, unfortunately, I think some of these words in different circles have been, um, challenged, right?
Overused.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the dilemma really is, you know, if we agree on the whole big picture and concept, that all means all, and equity is providing people what they need. We, we don't wanna not be consistent with language that's used with our students and staff, right? And so I do think that, as long as it's in concept, that we can explain it to different constituent groups as to what it means and what it is not, I think that's gonna be our goal, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, and then there is one, another one, it says, possibly change safe space to welcoming environment.
Where's that one for what number?
Uh, I'm sorry, that's over, sorry. See, nods, some nods.
Is that just because of like the buzzword in this, okay, please?
I think it is, and I think what it does is that actually, but I would say for, for what I've been hearing from people, what it says to them. When I grew up, we didn't, we didn't have that, you know, I mean, like, the world was big, whatever, and it almost feels like it's, um, you're saying you're just gonna produce a welcoming environment for everybody, for, for all those, and stuff like, the safe place almost sounds like this. Right, you know, like this little tiny golden corner, it's almost, I, I think it's almost demeaning in a sense, that you're, you're trying to do the positive aspect of it, and it's like, you're trying to open your arms up instead of standing in the safe space.
Well, if I think a welcoming environment, um, it, it's definitely inferred, you can't have a welcoming environment if you don't feel safe, right? So I think it may be more all conclusive.
It's, it's an issue, could it be welcoming and safe environment?
Instead of safe space?
Welcoming and.
Safe space might be overused, because it's a literate. Right, but what I think what it does is that, I, it just makes you feel, it's just like, I need my safe space, you know, like when people would say that, you know, I need a safe space. It's like, if it's a welcoming environment, you're already going to have that, I just think what it does is it just kind of pushes out the more positive aspect.
I don't dis, yeah, I don't disagree with that, and I really like the welcoming environment, because it is more inclusive, and I might offer that welcoming and safe are two different things, or could be two different things. Safely welcoming.
Well, what's the new word that, oh, you're using?
So I think, I think that's the point.
Inclusion and, and belonging.
Yeah.
To be like, welcome is making you feel the law, and you're that you want.
Okay.
I also don't want to share my secrets with other people, which would be safe.
Yeah, so how about if we do that, we, we combine things?
Welcoming and.
A welcoming and safe environment and not safe.
No space.
Is that, are we here with that? Okay, welcoming and safe environment. Thank you for that. Okay, we're gonna go to communications, a lot of checks, five checks, and one is times a hundred, so that's good. Um, then we have two wonders, uh.
Wait, what's times one hundred?
They agree on.
I'm not making ones, okay, here, here's what we have underneath eleven, or excuse me, underneath one, it says, and will share responses to constituents with the full board when were directed at, at the full board.
Yeah, so that, I did not word that very pretty, um, but I just, I just want it to be stated, I'd like it to be stated, and, and we do this now, I think that's great, but I want it to continue forever, that when the president, as the spokesperson, is responding to messages or inquiries that were directed to the full board, that the full board then sees.
Yes, right, yes.
Yeah.
That were all, I don't want, I don't want to have to ask, what was the response?
Yeah, I, I see a lot of nots, I think that makes good sense.
We do that, that's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then at number six, um, potentially add deci, um, all decisions, um.
Okay, I'm gonna slide this one, so in our bylaws, it states that the board makes, is a part of making all decisions. So I, make your off the year, I mean, I guess I'm just wasting this on what I've seen, I'm used to it a lot.
Yeah, it's about, uh.
It can be made by the president, oh, gosh, let me just write it here, okay.
Something about decisions that the president has to.
Well, without, you have to make, if you're gonna make a decision, it needs to be the full board's decision, that.
Number five?
Like, for instance, for instance, it is not that it's a bad thing, we decided to be at the fine arts, but we didn't make that decision, you made the decision without asking, you know what I mean, like the full board, so if the president's gonna make decisions, I would like to be a part, because that's what's in our bylaws, all decisions are made by the board. So I know that small things, like it's little things, like if you're studying something over the true in law, if you're doing whatever that affects all of us collectively, because I have to stand behind this decision, and if I was left out of it, I wanna be a part of it, so I don't know how to word, you know what I mean, like, I'm just kind of based on, like, how does that, how does that work? And it's not, and it's not a bad thing about the fine arts, it's just would have been nice to have a discussion to come to that decision. So I'm just thinking about like, future things that might, like, how does it feel like for future presidents and stuff, like, what does that look like?
So my wondering around that is that, there, just as a function of operations, there might be decisions that are made in combination of this partnership. For example, bus accident, I, I don't have enough time.
Right.
You know, we're not gonna have an emergency meeting to fully discuss what's going on, she may have to contact you or different people, um, so might I suggest, and it's tough to like delineate, I mean, I think what you were talking about is maybe more of a, um, more of a broader decision that might warrant more further discussion.
Right, right, and then as I said, I didn't write it correctly, I just think, I was just thinking along the lines of, what, I think we would like to be included in decisions that I feel like we could participate in, is that what it says?
That's not really communication as much as decision making, but when we sometimes used to tap things on the end of the superintendent's update, is that the way, if something has happened, then you can put it on there and see if you have any objections, individually contact me, I mean, and I'm asked that too.
Yeah, I think, I think that works.
Right, right. And I feel like our superintendent's updates don't come every week, though.
Yeah, they do.
Well, they do, and with the new super.
Yeah. So I think that's good, then.
Yes, that, yeah. So on the other one, what I wrote down, if this works, is all correspondence directed to the full board will be responded to by the board president, and a copy of the response will be distributed to the full board.
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah.
What was that, one?
One, number one.
Oh, number one.
Go down to that, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So consensus around communication, okay, we're moving along, uh, board meetings, check, check, check. Um, I have a dash, long dashes between together and district policy.
There's me.
Um.
Uh, there's, aren't we?
Mind if I send those numbers?
She's just.
Yeah.
So my mountain.
Uh, and then we have a couple here, number nine.
So you want them dashes there.
Number nine, it says.
Right.
It says, direct to the proper person, district personnel question mark, on number nine.
Well, that's what the superintendent will do, whoever said that, so we give it to the superintendent, so they will direct that to the right.
So it's inferred.
Wait, we're talking about public comments, though, right?
No, we're on board meetings.
I'm sorry.
Number nine.
Yeah.
Number nine is that's.
Yeah.
But that's not really true, we don't do that, we give it.
Correct, the per.
The correct district personnel.
Correct, so, we have the superintendent give it to whoever needs to handle it.
Right.
We don't do that, that's not our job.
Or does Val work?
Whatever, it's not.
Superintendent or doesn't mean?
This was written for those.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, then obviously, maybe you can see why I would have written that.
So whoever wrote that, are you comfortable with that, we don't give it to the people, they'll have, Sarah, to.
Yeah, that's fine, I just thought Val, Val is the board secretary, and that would be on behalf of the board, and the board gives it to Eva.
Well, she's also the superintendent.
But yeah, that's fine, so, no, I'm comfortable with that, I'm just explaining why I.
Yeah. Explain the.
Is there a change?
No.
Okay.
Then she can request.
Number four, it says, specific window.
Oh, so in number five, we do have a specific window, you talk about one week prior, that should be repeated in number four. Request for an item to be placed on the agenda should be submitted one week prior to the meeting, to the board president, we, we call that out in number five.
Yeah.
Number five kind of like a four A.
Yeah, five is more than a four A bother me, and I didn't.
I'm just saying, if it's, if it's the practice, then it should be.
It should be. Instead of in advance, just say a week in advance.
Yeah.
But instead of in advance, change it to a specific timeframe, one government advance.
Or just take number five.
Yep.
Yeah, be four A to here.
Okay, and then.
Is that gonna be clear enough, though, because technically, it's a week in advance of the committee meetings.
Then put it in there.
Okay.
But gonna be a penny meeting?
No, it needs to be committee meetings, because that's when we do our discussion.
Right.
And that's when we populate agendas.
Okay.
Great.
I love the phrase, board meeting should not involve surprises, it's gotta be like one of the most important statements.
And some, some are, I'm certain.
Remove number five, Kristen.
You don't know what public comment, what's gonna come out.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, remove the number five.
It should be number five.
And then four is two. And combine them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, are we good, Kristen?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, I have a question on.
Okay, number, number ten, it is, it said, has Board of Education members, member unit, support and abide by established.
I wrote really messy.
No, it's okay. I don't know, I just.
This is an idea for everyone.
This is adding?
This is adding, because there's not.
I said, Board of Members, Board, Board of Education Members will support and abide by established policies and best practices for an orderly meeting.
Seems pretty reasonable, do you have any objections?
Which is Robert's rule of order?
No.
We don't.
Not necessarily.
No.
It's a metric procedure.
It's a.
Okay, I think there's consensus there.
All right, I need to write it down.
Yep.
Kristen, I'm assuming you.
Question on.
I'm writing them down, but I might have a. Yep, yep.
You can't be that old, you.
Number five. Number five, uh, there's a question, what about emergent items?
Well, if something came up all of a sudden.
How are these communicated in the.
Yeah, how would those get added, is there a discussion that you can do and.
Would that be part of the superintendent's report, then?
Oh, I guess, yeah.
For more communications?
Yeah, but anything other than that, we have to vote on the new.
Well, did this happen with, um, oh, well, I mean, it's, it's pretty short by the time we have this change of light.
I would say we should vote, is more redirected?
Yeah, but we kind of like, we had to put it on there, make a discussion.
We're gonna ask them to revisit it, so.
So that was my only comment about the one week prior to committee meetings, like, how does it, I don't know.
If we miss that deadline, great.
I think the question on the president, obviously, and if we just really get directed with the president, then there can, if something lasts to an emergency, it has to be done, and that's the version of the.
The, the law in your bylaws probably outline that you can have an emergency meeting if you post any ten hours in the.
Right.
Right?
I mean, probably not do an emergency, because like, oh, I don't want an emergency, but.
You have to have a sense of, you have to have a sense of what would be an emergency. What if you don't know what would. School closing?
Then it would just be.
For an emergency situation?
We would give it to you when you think.
How about that? More politics, I didn't see superintendent.
Yeah.
Well, and the agenda can be amended by majority of voting for.
Oh, at the time of the meeting, you're right, okay.
And that's our meeting policy.
We have the board.
The agenda.
Okay.
Like, we have.
We have power.
Yeah, exactly.
You have.
I'm good.
So you're all set.
We're all set.
So I don't know that, yeah, I wanna make sure that we're, you're comfortable with that.
Actually, though, it's all, yes, you can, we keep the men, the agenda, I.
Majority goes.
Oh, yeah.
Or, why, isn't that, isn't that surprising?
No, hopefully the superintendent knows that's coming, because if it's a public forum, you need to do that out of record, you know what I mean?
This would refer to not showing up at the meeting and saying, I wanna ask this, can I get three more votes?
In that part, yeah.
You never heard of it.
Gosh, okay.
And so, you know, we, a common practice is, and agreements that we have, um, is if, you might have questions as you're hearing presentations, but as you're preparing for the board meeting, if you have questions, the courtesy would be to give a heads up, right? You know, I was reading through this, and I just wanna let you know, I, I need a little bit more information, right? Um, that's the kind of idea about no surprises, because, I mean, Sarah and your superintendent is gonna be prepared and will be able to respond, but like trying to avoid catching him or her, or getting him on the hot seat, especially if you knew in advance that you had questions. And I think that's something, um, it's a kind of an unwritten rule that I found successful working with boards, too. Okay, the last one here, uh, who, who decides what gets placed on the agenda? Rewrite or include all numbers, question mark?
Okay, it's kind of like number four and five.
Okay.
So I guess it says right here, and so this is a thing, so it's a, um, a, um, request for an item to be placed on the agenda should be submitted in advance, okay? So I, when I first started off, I started submitting stuff in advance, and then they get placed on the agenda, which I know it's kind of got ruled out of order, basically, but, how, you know, and then, and then I did it a short period of time, so that said, you have to put something on the agenda to be at particular word, whatever it talks about to discuss, and then they get placed on that agenda. So I guess what I wanna do is like, either, I mean, I wanna better understand, and I wanna write it, because I feel like in some way, and that was, I mean, this was at the beginning, so it was kind of like one of those things where, like, going forward, how does that work? Because we're, I mean, we're supposed to be working together on this, and there are things that come up, and it's not, I know, everybody, um, some of us is a one air journey laundry, I get that, but at the same time, there's things that do happen that are public, and we need to discuss, so, like, I, I don't wanna be, I, I don't want to be on the phone calling that person, that person, because you're not supposed to do that for a, for an exact violation, because now you're getting a consent of it, it doesn't happen, so I guess, I feel like I'm stuck, is like, if I wanna put something on the agenda, or I want something addressed, and not fully answered, but I wanna hear everybody's opinion, because that's when you're supposed to do it. Is how does that work? So I guess that's more of like a, it's a little bit of a struggle about how you word it in such a way, so, um, you know, board members don't feel left out of, like, discussing things that seem, that, that are important, but not, you know, but at the same time explained, you know, if I've even this explaining, like, you know, so I don't know, I, that's why I have this trouble with it a little bit.
And, and I appreciate you looking that up, did you?
Uh, what I was gonna say is, on those, I, that I, I don't remember what specific issues were that you had brought up, but the problem was that you wanted things to be put on the agenda that weren't board relevant, like, they weren't things for the board to consider, they didn't follow their life policies and finance and superintendent values, they're not things that as a board would do, so that's why, and I think I told you that at the tacky, so hopefully I did, because the explaining.
Well, and I think for me, I felt like it fell under policy, because I felt, and that's, I think that's what the disagreement was, is I felt like there was something that was happening within our school that was infringing on some civil rights or religious liberties, that do we have to put a policy, do, did we have to put a policy in place that made sure that we didn't tip the scales for that? And I think that was where I thought it was a policy issue where something was happening, and it's like, it's not repeated, so how do we bring it up to the board, you know, the agenda to discuss the fact, and even if you just do it lightly, the fact, like, makes problem resolve, but how do you do that going forward, you know what I mean? So I guess better understanding that is.
Yeah. I think this is, this is a classic example of why 101 board membership is really important.
Right.
Because that would give you some parameters, not, not you, but collectively, of understanding what are, what are the roles, what are, how does policy work, what's important, because we're, we're all conscious of the Open Meetings Act, but understanding the actual roles and responsibilities of the board is really, really important. And putting a parameter of timeframe in here, I think will be really helpful. Because that explains why.
Yeah.
You know, having to go through the committees, and then, you know, then going to the full.
I, I agree, and I might offer a, a, an intermediate step, too. And that would be, um, meeting with the board president in the circuit, like, if you feel like this is an issue, to maybe have a conversation about why, and then, if it gets to that point, you might decide, you know what, we'll call up M A S D and talk to their free legal attorney, Brandon Mas, but in the business forever, very responsible, just to get his perspective, an outside objective perspective about this particular issue that might have, as you indicated, legal ramifications. And that might give you a sense to say, okay, we're, we're, it, it isn't important to discuss in public, because we know what our role is and what that, and what that entails and doesn't entail. And I don't know that you need to codify that, but I think that might be a practice that might help moving forward.
Right, and I think for me, if we go back to the things that we discussed, why we ran for office, it, it was near and dear, like, of, of, an area of, I think, protecting kids and ensuring that we weren't, you know what I mean, like exposing kids to certain things that they didn't need to, you know, and it, you know what I mean, and it's infringing on, you know, some civil rights under their religious beliefs and stuff. So I think that is the thing, and, and it was like, and I know she, you're new at, I mean, she's new at, I was new at my position, so it's not like, you know, so I think it's just trying to work through, what does that look like, and it's up going forward for me to say, you know what I mean, like, I, I want clear, defined, okay, I wanna know where my boundaries are.
Yeah.
And I wanna know if I can go all the way to the line, I want, I mean, that's, that's the kind of person I am, I know that about myself, but if, if I, if I get shut back this way, then it becomes this question of like, I don't, no, and I don't understand why I can't.
And that's why, and that's why I think it's important to maybe have that intermediate step, where you get legal counsel to say, you know, here's what the interpretation is, and that gives you more information to make those, those decisions. So I hope I didn't add additional step to that, but it might be helpful at times if situations like that come up.
Right, so what I've done, should, for everybody here, because I'm trying to take the notes and make the changes, so I've consolidated four and five together into one, and right now it reads, board meetings should not involve surprises. Superintendent and board president work together for district policy to set the agenda. Request for an item to be placed on the agenda should be submitted a week in advance of the committee meetings to the board president. The president will respond with a request directly to the requesting member, and that, if the item is not able to be added in the next agenda, the president will communicate that information to the requester.
And you had the one week piece in there?
Yeah, yeah, I have the one in there.
You don't, we should put anything in there saying, you just think it should be more practice?
I, I, I would say it's more practice than actually articulating, if you're comfortable all coming up with that. Okay, great. All right, last one, uh, planning and monitoring, so we have a lot of checks, um, we have, uh, one that says, number six, work with the superintendent to establish measurable outcomes for the strategic plan.
That was mine.
Okay.
Shouldn't that be part of five?
Shouldn't that be part of the strategic plan?
Right, that should be part of five, I think.
Okay, it's just not spelled out, and I feel.
No, but we talked about strategic plan, so, do you like it separate, or could that be part of number five?
It could be.
Sure.
Oh, and which, I didn't even see that part, I mean, against which is my success.
Yeah.
Right. I didn't even see that.
Okay, so we're good there?
Yep.
All right, we have number one, commit to our vision.
All right, that's me, so what I was saying is, our vision is all learners achieving individual potential, knit, knit, but, does it make sense to say, commit to our vision of all learners achieving individual potential through high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction, and find principles for that vision? Not a big deal, but our vision is established, and it's nice to stick to that in those that means by which we do it, if I'm getting hung up on something stupid, I don't care, it's not gonna make a great.
I don't understand what you're saying.
It's quite a state vision.
She's adding in.
I'm adding our vision.
Adding in. Or part of what's in number three, sticking it up in number one.
Yes, what if the district vision changes?
I know, it's just.
Yeah, that's a good point, though.
It, it changes every single year.
Yeah. And with the whole process, it may tweak a little bit, right? And so, as long as you're saying what's.
The district vision.
The district vision, I think, would make sense.
Through, blah, 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 yeah, so it's a matter of vision, those are, you know what I'm saying, so commit to the basic district vision through, you know, high expectations for student achievement, blah, 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 blah.
Okay. Can you say that again, sorry?
So just commit to the district vision, and then it just goes on from there.
Oh, okay, okay.
High expectation, oh, yeah, through high expectations, sorry.
For student achievement, so, yeah.
Through high expect.
Yes, the vision is all learners right now might change, we're gonna work, commit to that vision by having high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction.
So no matter what the vision is, right, we're gonna do it with that view.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was inclined for well-being there, too, but I'm gonna figure it's elsewhere in there, so.
Okay, so we have two more items, uh, number four, it says, commit annually, should it be recommit, question mark?
Yeah, I was, I was just questioning why it says commit annually to support the action plan.
What if they change, then you're not recommitting, it's a regular commitment? How about continually support the action plans?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Do we have a meeting where we commit?
I was very confused by that.
Very annual.
Well, then, and I wrote down there, but you don't, continual is the same with these, you don't do this.
Yeah.
I was, I was confused.
So that kind of addresses your question as well, right?
This is more origination, I guess, point, and then.
Okay, are we, are you good with that? Then the last one, it's here, number five. So are we failing on this?
Again, aspirational. I don't, I think we need to take out this, uh, year, like. This is an announcement.
But I do wanna say it, all of my, like, what.
Wait, 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 stop, what are you talking about, number five?
The strategic plan that we don't have.
Issues we don't have. And then, and then if you say, oh, well, this is an odd year, but it's not.
Starting, we've never known.
I've never heard of all my years on.
These are more, this is what we aspire to do, so leave it in there, and we need to start doing it, just like the self evaluation, we didn't do it last year, but we know it's a tool.
But I think number four takes care of it.
Say it again?
Number four addresses the continually supporting action plans out loud in the strategic plan.
Yep.
Policy financial support, so, you're, you're, you're saying we're having a strategic.
I like that, because number five just says that we're failing in our.
Well, so then the second sentence in number four could just be, work with your president to establish measurable goals for the strategic, or, you know, the thing that makes the.
The new superintendent.
Well, I, the reason why, no, no, but I'm, you know, I mean, because they talked to me about strategic plan originally, but what, but, what I have said is, it is a really powerful tool to move a district forward, and the conversation needs to happen with the superintendent who's going to be driving that work.
Hundred percent.
Not with me, and I said, in reality, I can create a strategic plan in my office without any input. Because I know where we should be going in the next three to five years, but in order to have the voice of your stakeholders, being your teachers, and your administrators, and your community, being part of that conversation is gonna be really powerful for your new superintendent to hear.
I, I really concur.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a, but what I have committed to do, and, is I'm creating a folder of strategic planning guidelines for the new person, and I've met with, um, superintendents in Kent County who have recently done strategic planning, looked at their R F Ps and what that looks like, and so, again, as I, I've probably just spoken with, with Kristen on this, but the first year of a new superintendent is gonna be really challenging for them to do a strategic planner. But that doesn't mean that the second half of the school year can't be the prep work that needs to happen in order to move it forward, but it's gonna be really important for that individual to be the one driving the work.
Just to clarify, Sarah was made aware that we had a strategic plan, and we had hoped we could get it to the point where then was still here, where he would get some specifics from staff that we were going to get identified, but with none of those identified, there's no way to creep that into a usable document, so it's just, once Sarah came in, she's like, this is not in a place that we should go forward, you know, there needs to, that's all, so, nothing major.
So, a lot of great discussion, and it sounds like you've got consensus around your planning, your documents, your commitments, if you will, around norms, professionalism, governance, communication, board meetings, planning and monitoring. What I might suggest is that we take all that feedback and, and change the mathematical or the syntax, if you will, and then, you know, you could do it a couple different ways. You could have at the next board meeting, formal action, right, and say, this is what we're all committing to, you know, some boards all sign it, have a signature page, and they're committed to that work in that fashion. You could do it more relaxed and say, there was clear consensus here, we'll refine the documents. I'm gonna re-ground us to this, because I believe that this, in my opinion, is extremely well done, and it shows your understanding and commitment to the district from a role and responsibilities. My suggestion would be, this is the cover page, and then, you would then link how you're going to execute that through your commitments that you've made, okay? But not take that down, because I really do think that's a violation. So, again, I, I, you know, I leave that up to you, you've got a really, really good, solid document that had, had strong consensus around tonight. Um, we did run out of time, uh, to go through some case studies, um, and, you know, and as we kind of talked about, this is, you're committed to professional learning, this is just one step, and then, you could go through those case studies, or we could go through those case studies through that lens of what you've already agreed to, and that can be some powerful learning as well.
See, and what I said could be the next step, because they're going through superintendent search.
Right.
So to have the next learning piece be with the new superintendent, but in, in, in June, like, not wait until fall, but, you know, that they're technically not on board, but they're part of your process at that point, so to have another work session where you have, um, the new superintendent present, myself still at that point, um, that, that would be helpful, just to continue this conversation, to jumpstart, you'd be ready for August first, basically.
But we're, we need a work session, so we're full, right? With M I, right?
But that, that comes with, I think that comes with the selection of the super, you wanna, you wanna work on, are you talking about the board goals, or what you have expectations for the superintendent?
Yes, for like the first three or four months.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be a facilitating conversation with whoever you're selecting as a, um, as your search for, yeah. Well, thank you very much, I apologize for going home.
Thank you.
It was really a good.
Yeah, they, that actually occurred to me the first.
What's our, do you have to start talking?
Grab this here.
Take off the, the board void to have a work session and talk.
I have a work schedule.
I do not, yes, so that's what happens at the end. But I actually would see.
But we are.
Well, I think we do, just saying, how to be the owner of a board that.
No, but I mean, that's when you're actually involved, so, yes, so he might say to you.
You weren't?
But, but he might also say.
Yes, okay, it is six thirty, we just finished our training with Dr. Segler, and I'm going to call a brief recess before we move into the next section of our meeting. Did you read it?
Turn the camera on.
What are you doing?
No.
Oh, sorry, you just. Oh, sorry, the camera's still on.
No. I mean.
Yeah, she needs four and a half. Okay, four and a half.
Can we just have Andrew close up first?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I think we'll leave the camera on until we go into close up.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, take your form.
I just came over. Yeah.
They look, I just seem a little bit crazy to watch the, at some point.
Yes.
You know, a lot of conversations.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, but. Survive some of this. We just don't have time to gather, I mean, this is.
That's right.
So how can we capitalize on that? I don't know. I don't know. Just, just think about, like, I don't know, something.
Whatever.
I don't know, I don't know.
Or when they do decide.
It's still pretty. But you're coming home.
Oh, right.
I can't see that.
Yeah, that's.
And then you're still looking down with that.
Right, yeah.
Talking, you're dragging your tail.
And it's setting your, you're like, what are we doing?
Stop. Drive carefully.
Okay.
And then, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Interesting thing too, is when, when students miss the hand theater. And this was something Ellie and I wanted to do, because theaters.
Have four.
Four and a half minutes. It's not a three twenty.
Even early.
It's like, it's like.
Well, then, I don't know.
Well, it's like, what, should I know that too?
I know. I know, I know. I know. I want to go into the office.
My apologies. I have to spend a lot of time.
We're starting to sell codes today.
Whenever you're like, you know, I go now. I said, I don't have to worry. I'll probably.
After Wednesday, I said, Scott, if there's one on Friday, I would work there.
Yeah.
Because I cannot wear and have them at home. So Katie always clothes anyway. So we're home, not listening. I couldn't even talk to someone.
Okay, so.
We are ready. This is gonna be quick. Well, it's, this has been a long week.
So this was where we, I'm just.
No, that's. There's a lot of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I like jackets, like, I'm like, you do whatever, a lot of that, and I'm like, I need a little, you know. Cut out.
I wear a lot of. I wore a lot of that.
We don't want to go. We're supposed to go for another forty-five minutes, but.
I'd be done with that. I don't have any other choices.
Wish I could get done.
I love. When you're disappointed. This is roll first. Yeah, I mean, one of your marks.
If, if you, if you were a board like that.
And they're all validating.
All right, well, Devin, come say it right back.
Yeah.
Yes. It's a laundry at this point, but they're like, yeah, at least like. Deal with anything.
Right. I'm like, no, no.
I told him he couldn't say it because you say he was here.
I have to go work.
Yeah, exactly. It's shut down, so.
And the only times they come in are when I'm new.
Of course.
Crazy.
Isn't it so fun?
Yeah.
No, it's not. Yeah, it's like. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just picked up one of these and I was like, I really missed it here. Because I've just been, um, sitting. I know, and I said, I know. I don't, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't specifically asked about furniture because I was like, just don't bring these ugly, great, you know, chairs in our office. Please do not. They shed, they shed.
Our, our, all of that.
Yeah. All of it, yeah.
And I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're really easy to, yeah.
Are they motorized? My husband has all, my husband bought a motorized one for our home office.
I know.
Because he wants. It's amazing.
I like my, I have one of these. And so I really struggle with energy, it's in your back and it's in my mouth.
Yeah, yes.
And I'm not, I don't have an opportunity to scan, so.
Yeah.
Put your hair up?
We did.
She did. She's already done. You're already.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I started morning with this kind of down. She was about eight thirty on.
When I get from the back, I get it down. Bye. Bye.
So much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I can actually get my hair to look good. Well, and then to my boss, and if I, I get dry, it's like, I'm tired. Like a quarter. You have to try, I'm like, oh, that's really well. I like the order. He loves so hard. My hair is in dry as can be. I can't, when I'm trying, I'm like. Oh, I'm like, I was like.
That's what I'm saying. Well, that thing.
I think it's fine.
Of course.
Right, right.
When people say, oh, maybe, that's because you're here with you guys.
Right, right. It looks just like I always did. And so people are doing something. No. But I can get my hair to look great here in the winter.
In the winter, right.
In the winter, in the summer, I don't even try. My hair looks great here. Yeah, because I can't do this here. I need to commit it here. It would look like.
Yep.
You want some help getting up for, it's our five minutes up.
Is it peanut butter or sugar?
It's peanut butter.
Very light, light peanut butter. I'm expressing sorrow for you. My kids get mad at me when they'll say something, I'll go, oh, I'm sorry. They're like, it's not your fault. I'm like, it's a phrase. I'm sorry for you. I'm sorry. But yeah, I get pushback. I say, all right.
She's like, I didn't want paper.
I feel like peanut butter cookies. It was not, her favorite a little bit.
I like the texture. I'm an ice and sock. I don't like crunchy.
And I like chocolate, so it has chocolate in it. Don't bother. Oh, I like chocolate. It's gotta have chocolate, yes, yes. It's like, don't you like, you understand? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're going into closed session.
Okay.
That's it. Yeah, there's nothing. We're just gonna do, I'm just gonna give you guys a couple highlights.
I'll share.
Yeah. Wish you luck.
Is that what Chinese?
February meeting, I mean. It's a February, uh. I'm not going to be here, no. But I, I'm available. I am. I already told, there's, there's, there's some things that have to be managed, you know, so other things.
What, what's your, what's your day?
It'll be a week from the Saturday.
Right.
And then I'm gone.
Yeah.
All right.
It's our first time.
Did you have fun?
It's our thirty-fifth wedding anniversary. It's just not described for.
We did some.
Have a long trip.
I didn't cross me.
I don't know. I mean, I had a chance to ask you.
He told our boys.
We get, they wanted to get a price, so we didn't tell them. I found this, I got, she was pumped.
The big guy.
Because.
Teacher. We're on the cone side.
Okay.
My. Ooh, right, right. He's on the other side.
That and vice versa. And we're a teacher in fourth.
So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to.
She's a northern high school teacher who's sun.
Greg is, um, you know, signed up for the K I N, because we have friends there. And so, you know, it's like, get on this.
She helped.
And then she showed up.
About her son having, you know.
And I said, you signed up for whatever.
You're not signing.
Just about. It's two buses right on the, one of the nicest little. And we tried to say, this is, this is, and they said, hey, I'm friends.
Oh, really?
We're friends. So we know each other, and we talked, and this was a year ago. They're going to get our ones this year. And I am interested because I told them, you guys were considering doing next month's.
Sure.
We started back and said, um, I think we're as well. The class was perfect. So we just, we just.
And we're renting their car.
Yeah, exactly.
So I mean, it's like, it's, it's, it's present, it's present. We're not really going to get to the hand though. For, for how long is it, we're gonna say for what are, what they're, you know. They're basically, it's, it's really, they're like, we just want some of the beer. You know, we're gonna charge you, but, you know. Oh, I know they got it. I know. It's insane.
And that's it. I said.
How are they all there?
I know.
It's insane.
Saturday?
Yeah.
Oh, hi. Oh, my, what's she gonna get? She's going to get pattern on her cat. I don't think it's a pattern. Does she draw it or something? She can't draw it. Okay.
She's boy grass, yeah.
Where's she gonna get it? What kind of? Have you heard of those, um, security?
Can we start? How is that here? But should we, you know? I didn't know. Well, you found.
You mentioned that we do. Oh, I can go make this one call.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we could.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Uh, we need a motion to move into closed session for the superintendent's evaluation.
We should move to closed session.
Okay, we are in closed session. All right, we are coming back into open session. All right, thank you for everybody for the superintendent's evaluation.